Ladies and gentlemen, if we would, the magic hour has come and gone by a minute and five seconds according to the clock up here. So this is the Planning and Zoning's fourth workshop on sand mines. This has to do with enforcement related to mining. First item on the agenda, though, is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the public with which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. What we'd like to do today is we're going to have staff make their presentation and run through several other people about the enforcement issues. Then we're going to have questions and comments by the members up here, and hopefully we'll kind of target some of the areas we think need to be addressed. There will be public comment in case we've missed something up there. You'll all get your shot. After this is over, and hopefully it will not take all afternoon, we would like, as a commission, we would like to move on into maybe summarizing, because we have had four different workshops now. We've got to come to some fruition here, so we thought we'd try and start the discussion later on today about moving ahead, about where we're headed. If any of you all want to stay for that, you'd be welcome to do it. So with that, Stan, lead us off.
Okay. Good afternoon. For the record, I'm Stan Bowlin County Planning Director, and I'd like to go over some background information, do a PowerPoint, kind of set the stage. At some point, have the Assistant Public Works Director, Chris Moore, talk for just a couple of minutes about GPS technology and what some of the possibilities are with that. And then Sergeant Jim Stewart from the Sheriff's Office will give you all some information and be available to ask questions about traffic in law enforcement. Let me take a moment to go through some background information. This is the fourth of four workshops on various issues relating to mining. This is the Compliance and Enforcement Workshop. From this point, at the end of this workshop, the Planning and Zoning Commission is to come to a consensus on generally the types of changes to the county's regulations and policies that they think need to be made based on all the information that you all have discussed at the workshops. That recommendation would be reported to the Board of County Commissioners in September. The Board could then, and we would expect them, to authorize formal amendment of the land development regulations and any policies, and then for staff to initiate that. Go to the Professional Services Advisory Committee in October, back to you all, the Planning and Zoning Commission in November, and then the Board of County Commissioners in December. So December would probably be the final hearing for land development regulation amendments, which would kind of be the end product of these workshops. With respect to compliance and enforcement, generally the way that staff uses these terms, compliance, the goal of compliance is to correct a violation, and the enforcement part penalizes the violator or the operator, and thereby provides incentives to comply in the future and to not have violations going forward in the future. We have various jurisdictions and parties involved in compliance and enforcement of regulations that affect mines. We have the St. John's River Water Management District. They have purview over stormwater, surface water, and groundwater issues. DEP especially has jurisdiction over wetlands, pollution prevention, and discharge. Wanted to say something here that we've mentioned before. With respect to groundwater impacts especially, the county does not have staff expertise in this area, and we're primarily looking for, from an enforcement standpoint, if we have any evidence of adverse groundwater impacts, we would assist the agencies with the expertise in investigating that and drawing conclusions and going through their own enforcement process. And that really kind of speaks to this sort of network effect of local staff working with the state agencies on issues that they have purview over. Locally, Sheriff's Office is involved with traffic violations, Public Works staff involved with roads, traffic, stormwater, and pollution control. In fact, Public Works has a staff inspector to deal with pollution control plans specifically. Code enforcement and planning deal with the local mining regulations that you all have been going over, as well as development regulations, and of course, we have some of our own local environmental regulations. I did also want to mention the water control districts, because it's possible that some violations could relate to discharge and use of water control district canals, and so they may be involved in enforcement action from time to time as well. A few things to note, there is overlap in the jurisdictions, and so coordination is essential for effective enforcement, and that's a lot of what the code enforcement officers do. They're not just looking at it from code enforcement standpoint, but contacting other agencies and departments that might be interested in what's going on. Also, just may seem obvious, but it's real important that the local staff tends to act as eyes and ears for the agencies. So it is an important communication link going from local staff to those agencies, and then they can begin their own process when warranted. We have existing controls in our approval and our code enforcement process. I wanted to hit on those, and these control points, I think, are important points that I think will stay in place regardless of the type of regulation changes or policy changes you all come up with or the Board comes up with, to fit into the existing process. That's something you might want to keep in mind looking at enforcement. The first step is site plan and administrative permit review and approval. If you all change the process to special exception, it would just be site plan and special exception, but that's the first step in the process. And there's compliance with all the submittal requirements and procedural requirements that has to be met and determined to be met at that point. So many of the regulations that involve analysis and upfront submittals, that'll be resolved one way or the other upfront when that particular review is done. And then there's also the possibility of special compliance conditions being put on upfront with a particular project going through that process. So there may be some project-specific circumstances or challenges from an enforcement standpoint that can be addressed at this first juncture with special compliance conditions. The second point of control is that after site plan approval is granted, this is just like other types of site plan projects, we have an initial mining permit issuance, and that's a lot like site plan release step that you all might be familiar with, where even though a site plan has been approved and there are conditions put on that site plan, there's still, before any activity can occur out in the field on that site, this mining permit has to be issued. So it's a control point to make sure, especially that two things are done. One is that all the other jurisdictional agencies have issued their permits. That include our own county Public Works Department, you know, stormwater permits, right-of-way permits, that sort of thing. And then the other major item that's checked before this initial permit is issued is that all the bonds are posted. The bonds that guarantee that the unpaved roads will be maintained, that guarantee compliance with the site plan conditions and our mining regulations, and also a bond for restoration that at the end of the project, restoration is required. That would involve slopes, creating ponds, planting littoral zones, grassing all the area. That's the end product is a pond at the end of the mining operation, and that's what the restoration bond covers. And the type of security that's posted tends to be letters of credit or cash. That's generally what we've been dealing with the last several years. And the next point of control, let's say that a mine is approved, and it's approved for the maximum length of time under our regulations, 10 years. During that 10-year process, one year after that initial mining permit is issued, comes the annual mining permit renewal. And that is a point in time under our existing regulations where the code enforcement does a compliance inspection and verifies that all the agency permits are still valid, that the bonds are still valid, if they're letters of credit, that they're still valid. And so that's an annual control point in kind of the life of the mine. And right now, the way the regulations are set up is during the month of September is generally when all the requests for renewal are filed with code enforcement, and sometime during, sometimes late August or during the month of September, they do an unannounced inspection, code enforcement does. They're now taking Public Works staff as well on these inspections to have their expertise out there in the field as well. So this is an existing control point, and we actually have a recommendation on some enhancements to that particular activity. A fourth step, actually, we didn't describe in the staff report, but I think it's an important step, and it's the final step, and that's restoration and closeout. Again, if a mining operation is approved for 10 years, at the end of that timeframe, the land has to be restored. Even if they haven't mined the overall extent approved, they have to cease the operation, close it out, and restore the site to pond and green area and so forth in accordance with the restoration plan. That involves a final inspection of code enforcement and Public Works. We would inspect it much like we would a subdivision at the end of a subdivision project improvement. And if they pass inspection, and sometimes there's a punch list created, they have to address X, Y, Z, then we close out the project and return all the bonds. So the bonds are kept, and that's a real incentive for a mining operator to close out a project properly. And that's kind of the fourth and final control point. As well as those four control points, there's ongoing code enforcement, which involves investigating complaints and field observation. Staff may observe something, or we may get complaints from residents or neighbors, and that's ongoing. So that can happen at any time during the life of a mining operation. It involves coordination with various departments and agencies depending on the type of suspected violation, and involves a determination. Has a violation occurred? Is it the type that's ongoing with an existing violation, or is it a one-time occurrence? One-time occurrence might be complaints about driver violations. That's not an ongoing, but something that occurred in the past. With ongoing code enforcement, it really kind of falls into two approaches. One is what we call informal and initial enforcement, and that involves, you know, there's a complaint or an observation of a problem. The code enforcement officer coordinates with the mining operator. The violation is resolved in a timely manner, and that could be a number of things, and we've had over 20 years of experience with this. And some of these types of violations can be minor and can be responded to and corrected quickly. So we've had successes. We've also had challenges. Our biggest challenge, as we stated before, with respect, especially to road conditions, has been where we've had along 82nd Avenue, a shared haul route, two mining operations, which operation is violating or doing what type of impacts. That's been a particular challenge. And then there can also be challenges with kind of a cycle of, well, a violation occurs, it's corrected, a few months later, the same thing happens, and then there's kind of that need for follow-up, and that's been a challenge too sometimes with a cycle over the life of a mine. The other approach is formal enforcement, what we would term that, and kind of going to the next stage where we go through a formal process of documenting and citing the violation. And in the case of mining operations, rather than go through a typical type of code enforcement process, which could involve, it's a pretty lengthy process with the code enforcement board and fining and ultimately putting on liens and so forth. The real key to, kind of the hammer for enforcement with mining violations, is the fact that mining operators post security, and that security can be pulled by the county. And it's immediate, doesn't involve a fine or liens or anything. It's money they've put up, and it's taken. And there have been two occasions in the last 20, or actually 20-plus years, where the Board of County Commissioners have been presented with evidence of serious violation or repeat violations, and they've pulled the bonds. One was in the 1980s with a mining operation off of 49th Street, involved a discharge into a canal, illegal discharge. The Board pulled that bond, and staff observed, nor did St. John's observe, any repeats of that violation. Same with the sand mine on 82nd Avenue, the Hammond Mine. A compliance bond was pulled after the Board found that there were repeating violations on haul route, and I think a lot of measures were taken by the mining operators to control that, and that's not been a recurring violation. In terms of traffic enforcement, this is one issue that's been discussed, is discussed especially at the last workshop. How do you enforce actual driver behavior of the haulout drivers out there? The Sheriff's Office enforces traffic laws, and one thing to keep in mind is that with moving traffic violations, the driver has to be cited. It involves visually identifying the individual driver, that's who's actually committing the violation, and that's what the Sheriff's Office enforcement has to look to. In a moment, the Sheriff's Office will speak and give you some more information on that. Special enforcement is provided by the Sheriff's Office as needed and as resources allowed. They've been out on 82nd Avenue and other roadways where they either receive complaints or code enforcement has received complaints, whether it's about mining or other activities. We get a lot of different types of complaints from code enforcement, and the Sheriff's Office has been able to go out and do some special enforcement. But again, we'll be limited by what else they have going on or their resources, but they've been real responsive with code enforcement. We have a good working relationship. But in addition to that, this final fourth kind of bullet point here, and that is some alternatives to just that type of law enforcement. There is a possibility of, for instance, applicants funding and the county contracting with deputies to provide special law enforcement activities. There's also, we'll get into in a moment, the possibility of using GPS technology, which might augment law enforcement, but it's still going to take law enforcement out in the field to actually cite for moving violations. Couple of things that I want to throw out here before I turn it over to others, and that is there's basically three areas that staff identified in our analysis of potential changes to compliance and enforcement regulations and policies that we think would be effective, would enhance the whole compliance and enforcement issue with respect to mines. One is that annual permit review time, to expand that a bit and actually have a dry season and a wet season inspection. Again, we think it's important to keep these unannounced, to involve code enforcement and Public Works, to look at all the aspects of a mining operation. But those are the two conditions during the dry season and the wet season, we can have probably the most serious or critical times for impacts, whether it's dry conditions or wet conditions. So we think having a, basically a comprehensive compliance review for every mining project during those two times makes a lot of sense, and that'll be scheduled inspections, but again, unannounced. And we're also recommending that the existing fee for mining permits be increased to cover the increased staff time. And to reflect the staff time costs, we've done a bit of analysis, that's in your backup, and we think those changes should be made. And we think that'll be not only just an increase in regular inspections, but at the critical times, we think it's most important. The second type of change involves a lot more work on looking at the process here, but that would be to modify security and forfeiture requirements. We think the forfeiture, two things are the most effective. When there's a citizen violation or repeated violations, pulling the bond and stopping work on the site. Those are the two things that are the real hammers. So it requires a process where evidence can be considered and all sides can be heard, but it's a process that is not in the current regulations, and we think it'll be better to clarify the process of pulling bonds and so forth and what the end result is. Set penalties and guidelines based on the seriousness, the nature of the violation, the frequency of the violations. Again, look at a stop work period, where needed to correct violations, how are you going to, asking the operator, how are you going to make sure this type of violation does not happen again? What is going to change is going to keep this from happening again? And again, kind of a progressive consequences type of guideline. And then to specify the acceptable form of security, my understanding is that really cash and letters of credit is mostly what's used now, and that might be worth putting in the ordinance. I also might want to make sure that the different types of bonds that are posted, that we have separate instruments for them, because if there's one type of violation that occurs, it might make sense just to have a separate instrument that can be pulled and not affect kind of a combination security instrument. Again, that's a lot of the specifics. And at the end of the discussion, whenever you want, Mr. Chairman, I have a handout, a sample flow chart that could give you maybe some more specifics, at least for discussion purposes, just to see, you know, here's a process with progressive consequences for this type of violation, you know, pulling bonds, pulling bonds, and at some point, is there a terminate the mining permit? And to go ahead and lay out that process and to put that into the ordinance, I'm not suggesting you have to work all that out today, but to look at the concept of that. The other item involves traffic law enforcement criteria.
Stan, back up just a second.
Yes, sir.
Can you back up once?
Sure.
You've got the cash, and this specifically allow cash swap in lieu of pulling bond? Is that something?
Right.
I know that we've done that in the past, but now...
Right. We need to address that, and we may not want to allow that. In other words, what we've allowed in the past in lieu of pulling a security instrument in the county, if a developer comes in and says, "Don't pull my letter of credit, here's the cash instead," or something like that, that's been allowed.
Under our ordinance, the pulling of the bond would automatically shut them down by not pulling the bond, but by paying cash, they're allowed to keep going?
Right.
Okay.
Right. And so one potential part of the process may be to actually pull the security instrument. It would take time to process getting a replacement, and also give time for the operator to say, "This is how I'm going to correct the violation," or "This is how we're going to make sure the violation doesn't happen again." And that, yeah, that could shut it down for a number of days.
I just, you know, when people are weighing cash in front of somebody at the county, I'm not sure which part of it's going to be Joe Baer to the county commission says, "Don't take the money."
Well, we need guidance to not accept under those circumstances, so that is an issue we need to talk about.
How much are these bonds?
The bonds, as we had in the packet, we tried to give you examples. It varies. It depends on, the road bond, for instance, is based on how many miles of an unpaved haul route you're using. It's based on, and I do want to take this opportunity to correct, we had an error on page seven of the staff report.
There listed that.
It used to be, the road bond used to be $2,000 per mile, and it was increased to $10,000 per mile last year. In error, we put $5,000 on page seven. Apologize for that. So that's been increased already. That was increased last year. The two other types of bonds, the compliance bond is based on the overall project site. It's $1,000 per acre. So you could have an $18,000 compliance bond, you could wind up having $150,000.
Is that a net digging area or the gross property?
Right. It can be based on the development area. And we may want to specify, again, when we look at these amounts, we may want to specify which acreage we're talking about for the compliance bond.
Right.
It tends to be the biggest bond, though. And then the restoration bond is based on how many acres are being excavated in the active phase you're in, and it's $1,000 per acre to basically finish grading, to seed and so forth. So those bond amounts, we can certainly look at to make sure that, you know, we've already kind of updated the road bond. We may need to look at those other ones just to make sure that it's enough, especially the restoration bond. The third type of item that we pointed out that where compliance and enforcement policies and regulations could be enhanced is with traffic law enforcement. And again, we're going to let the Sheriff's Office give you a little bit more information on that, and Chris Moore, if he's available for GPS. But there is the possibility of, again, using contract deputies with spot, unannounced enforcement is a possibility. If they cite a driver of an operation with a violation, that violation could be a benchmark, or a number of those kinds of violations could be a benchmark to go back into, well, let's say, after three of your drivers have a violation, we're going to pull the bond. And then you progress down that more and more serious consequences sort of road, and again, if they keep repeating the violations, you know, all the way to terminating the mining permit, if it ever went that far. The other alternative that's at least been discussed at previous workshops, we wanted to give you some more information on, is the use of GPS, whether that, and how that benefits law enforcement, that can be discussed. And of course, the idea being that any of these traffic law enforcement items would be funded by the applicant. And in terms of the timing of these two, there's obviously various options. If you decide that, you know, contract deputies is something that, you know, a new mining operator doesn't need to do, but if there are truck driver violations, then make that a condition. You know, if there's a driver violation, then they've got a contract for more enforcement on traffic violations. You could say in the first year of a new project, you've got X amount of money to provide for spot enforcement, and if there are no violations, or there's only one violation, you don't have to do it again the next year. If you operate a good operation after the first year, no more contract deputy funding. I mean, so there's a couple of ways that you could, if you choose to look at contract deputy conditions, so to speak, that you could apply it. Let me just take a quick look around here and ask Sergeant Jim Stewart, if he would give us a little bit of information on traffic enforcement. Invite him to the podium to hear from him. Thanks.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Stewart. I'm currently the Sergeant of the Sheriff's Office Traffic Unit. When the Sheriff's Office got involved in the enforcement activities on 82nd Avenue, we did traditional enforcement with marked cars, unconventional with unmarked cars. We went out and pick up trucks. The complaints that came from the 82nd Avenue area were truly no greater than the complaints we receive on dump trucks for anywhere in the county. We get complaints from all over the county on dump trucks. We pulled some statistics from January 1 through December 31 of last year. There were a total of seven citations issued in the area of 82nd Avenue from State Road 60 to 69th Street. Four of those were for speeding, one was for running a stop sign, one was a seatbelt violation, and one was driving while license suspended. We also did an analysis of actual calls, complaints received by the Sheriff's Office for the same time period in 2007, and there were a total of 10. One was an accident, and the other were traffic complaints, speeding complaints. So as far as the 82nd Avenue area for the Sheriff's Office being a problem, it's really not. We do address complaints. We address the citizen complaints. We address complaints from the county, and we do go out there and try to do what we can, but I think the most part is the drivers that are out there, and the drivers are all through the county, are professional drivers. They do a good job. You have that 1% that maybe does speed or drives a little reckless, but I think that the perception, and let's be honest, perception is people's reality of the public, is that they're big, they're loud, they're noisy, they're scary, and they look like when they're driving down the road, they're doing something wrong. And the reality is, they're really not. We don't have a lot of enforcement problems with the dump trucks out there. But like I said, we do go out there, we make random checks. The one big problem also is that when we do hit that area, you're going to stop one, and you're done, because they're in constant radio contact. But if you, whether you're stopping them for education, or for a warning, or for an actual citation, you're just going to get that one. So on their current contract, Lieutenant Buffington was supposed to be here this afternoon. I'm not really up on the contract, but I think now our minimum is three hours, so you're going to pay a deputy to go out there for three hours, minimum three hours. He's going to stop one vehicle, and it's pretty much over with. And you're going to have that halo effect, though. As long as he's out there, everybody's going to behave, you know?
Well, they could.
We're willing to try things, do different things if it does become a big or a greater problem. But right now, from the Sheriff's Office enforcement aspect, it really is not a problem.
The three-hour, this timeframe, is that's a contract with a county on-duty deputy? Or is that an off-duty?
It'll be an off-duty contract.
Off-duty.
That they actually be off his normal working hours, but we contract it out to work that specific area.
Is the contract held with the Sheriff's Office or with the individual officer?
It's actually held with the Sheriff's Office. One of the things we had discussed was the possibility of weighing some of the trucks. We do get a lot of complaints of vehicles being overweight. The Sheriff's Office does not have that capability. The sheriff's office does not have that capability, nor by state law. Can we go out and weigh vehicles? That falls to the Department, Florida Department of Transportation, the motor carrying compliance officers. There is a special course, kind of like Customs put on years ago, under their Blue Lightning program, where you could go to a cross-designation school, and you were cross-designated as a customs officer. FDOT is now starting a course that I think is still in the works, because there's some problems that have to be answered with their general counsel as far as the legalities of it, but it's cross-training county officers or city officers as DOT officers. Then we would have the capabilities of going out and weighing them, but now you're talking about purchasing scales, portable scales, and things like that. We do have a good working relationship with FDOT, and if this does become a bigger problem, we can always invite them in, you know, bring your scales and come on down.
That's a point I wanted to make, can you invite them in, would they come in and help you out? Because it is special training and everything else going with it.
Right. The problem with FDOT, they are so short-handed, and they're coming out of Palm Beach, that's their closest station, so...
Closest one.
They're kind of like the house patrol, they have district or county troopers, but they function out of West Palm Beach.
Stan, Stan, you, Jim, hang on just a second. Stan, you mentioned the use of these contract deputies, and there was, the concept would be maybe using them on for the first year, or, and so then you didn't have to pay for that, or they wouldn't have to fund that for the next, if they had no violations, or if you had so many violations, we'd have to put them on. Was it your thought that they would be regulated through, like, the code enforcement or something, so we would, this county would actually make the contract, but we would be having billing lines, or?
Yeah, I think one possibility that would probably make the most sense is...
So you could send them out whenever you wanted to, would it just increase the random?
Yeah, that's correct. In other words, the county would contract, the applicant would fund, you know, whatever amount, you know, to do some spot enforcement. That way, the contract would essentially be between the county and the sheriff's deputies.
Okay.
Can a normal sheriff's deputy inspect the truck, for example, the cover being on, bad tires?
Absolutely, there is a Florida, matter of fact, I've got, I brought with me, and I'd be happy to give you a copy, this is the current statute guideline by Florida Department of Transportation, and these are currently the statutes that are enforceable by local agencies.
That's what I wanted to...
And we can, we can stop for inspection purposes, for uncovered loads, and things like that. And we can cite under Florida statute, specific to the...
I mean, you can't obviously weigh the truck, but if the truck is visibly overloaded, can you, you can't do anything. What if the third axle's nut down when he's carrying a load, can you do something?
It's actually, would be an unsafe condition.
An unsafe condition, okay.
Would that be by weight, though, and you don't have scales?
I think you can do it, you can do a visual observation of a truck to make sure that it's actually roadworthy, just like you would an automobile, you know, and if there's something that's telling you that this truck should not be on the roadway, then, you know, you can't actually physically weigh the truck, but...
You can pound it, or?
No, we can't impound it.
You can't impound it.
They cite, they can just issue citations.
Sight them.
How would you handle something like, one of the other complaints out there had been the directional, the off of the haul route? Would you, does this department know the haul routes?
That's where we actually got involved last year, and we actually just set up, we had two of the traffic deputies go down through 26th Street, and I think it was 82nd Avenue, and just directed them back the other way.
Within the, within the application, and when we issued the permits for this, Stan, there's no notification, is there notification given to the sheriff's department for, "This is the route," so that if they're cruising around, they can see it on their own, or we wait for a complaint?
Yeah, I'm not aware that, you know, we said this is what the route is up front, only in this instance where there's been an issue. And actually, I think, actually, haul route violations are probably, I mean, it took a code enforcement stakeout literally out there, but I mean, it's probably one of the easier violations to prove and to document.
Okay, so the driver can actually be cited for that?
It's, well, what...
It's maybe the mining.
What I'm speaking, it's easy enough for a code enforcement officer to document and verify that a haul truck from, you know, mining operation X went the wrong way. And in fact, that was used with the Hammond case before the Board of County Commissioners.
Even if it's a third-party driver, then it becomes a problem for the mine operator?
Right, and that's, that's one of the issues, you know, it's true, and as some mining operations, as we've heard, operators have their own trucks, their own staff, basically, their own fleet. Some operations rely more on independent truck haulers, and so sometimes there's a direct relationship, and sometimes an indirect relationship between the mining operator and the truck operators. Nonetheless, I think in either case, you know, there can be really strict management by the mining operator that can be brought to bear, and we've seen that, and we've heard that in discussions at previous workshops, too.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
I just would like to clarify, are you saying that the driver can actually be cited for going the wrong way, or it's the mine operator who gets cited for that, or both?
I...
He couldn't be cited under state statute, no ma'am.
No, he could not, okay, that, thank you.
It wouldn't be a moving violation.
Okay, thank you.
That was an interesting stat, I thought that Jim brought up, is that during that timeframe, sheriff's department only received nine complaints, or 10 complaints, one accident and nine complaints. And given the controversy that's ensued in this timeframe, the letters to the editor, emails to us, is it that most of the complaints went to code enforcement, or there weren't just, just weren't that many complaints, a lot of people writing letters, et cetera, but they weren't making official complaints to code enforcement or county staff, and only nine to the sheriff's department?
Actually, Jim, let me just ask you, with that nine or 10 complaints, was that directly from residents, not counting any contact from code enforcement officers?
These were just generated by the sheriff's office.
By the sheriff's office, right.
Mary.
So how many complaints did staff get?
Yeah, I have an inventory, you know, when we've received a call, I would say, actually, with traffic situations, a lot of times Public Works gets the call before code enforcement will, too. So it could come into a number of places in the county, and I don't have a number for that same time period.
Jim, do these trucks have to be, have identification on them, weight limits listed on the side of the truck?
Yes, sir.
Names of their company, certain size letters or anything?
Yes, sir.
And if it's an independent operator, can he operate with nothing on his truck?
Can't answer that question.
Come on?
I can't answer that question right now.
It's not a violation.
It may be under county ordinance, but not under state statute.
But he has to have the weight that his truck can carry listed on his...
They usually all have a weight designation on the side of the truck.
Truck, that's by state law.
Under the commercial vehicle statutes.
Their tag, their license would tie to some physical entity that owned that truck, right? I mean, if they don't have their name on the door, I mean, you can tell...
Absolutely, yeah. Whether the registered owner is.
Registered owner.
And county ordinance requires that the vehicle have identification on the side, you know, that they have the cover and that sort of thing, so there are a few local regulations already for some of those things.
That's the counties.
That's the county.
And that would be our code enforcement officer would be enforcing now, not the sheriff's department.
That's correct.
Or the cover would be...
There may be an overlap, you're right, there may be, the cover requirement may be a state law, too.
That's a state, state law.
Right, yes, sir.
But the identification on the door or something, that would be our own county.
That's in the county regulations, for sure.
Thank you.
I have a question of Officer Stewart. You said that there were seven citations on, in that area of 82nd. Is that something that you easily keep track of, that somebody could actually call you, let's say before a permit renewal process, and ask, "How many citations have you given to truck drivers in that area?" Or is this information you had to take time to research for today's meeting?
No, no, this actually was very quickly, it could be done by our wonderful analysts we have.
Okay, thank you.
The one thing, Jim, you don't have, you wouldn't be able to say which, in the case of multi-mines on one route, you wouldn't say which truck, where the truck came from, you would just have a citation.
I would have no idea knowing that, no, sir.
See, that's the, that's part of the dilemma, is identifying the location, so...
Would you be able to accommodate that, though?
Not on the state citation, no ma'am, there's no box for that. It's just you're actually citing the driver and then the vehicle information on that. You could ask him where he might be coming from, but...
It wouldn't be a fit.
It's not part of our protocol.
It calls for GPS, doesn't it?
That only makes sense. Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Thank you, sir. Sergeant, nice to see you here today and not meet you on the side of the road. Okay, Stan, has that kind of laid your groundwork for us?
That was it, the only thing I wanted to say about GPS, Chris Moore was going to be here, unfortunately, he's been, he's been pulled off on something else. And just, the only thing that I want to say is that my impression from Chris and talking to Sergeant Stewart, is again, GPS would not be used to cite, you know, say, for instance, a moving traffic violation or something like that. It's used, obviously, it can be used to track where vehicles go, although I think our experience so far is that haul route violations are probably, you know, easy enough for code enforcement to, you know, if they do a stakeout, they can, they can verify that. But certainly, GPS could be used for haul route violations, and if you get speed data and so forth, you can, you can get an indication that there's speeding going on between point A and point B, how long did it take to get there, that sort of thing. But again, it's not something that the sheriff's office could use as direct evidence, in other words, to cite a driver, for instance.
Right, it'd just be a monitoring or an indicator.
Correct.
Is there a, do you have a cost associated with that?
Yeah, and the...
The cost and how much it would cost to monitor?
Right, and...
It'll be quite expensive, I think.
Well, we get some information in the agenda item, and we got that from Public Works, they did some research of two firms, one firm that would install, you know, GPS monitoring devices, $700 per truck, and then another provider for $35 a month that would monitor, you know, any data generated by that. And that could be monitored by the mining operator, as I understand it, it could be, you know, the information could be made available to anyone who had the password for it. So there is, there is that capability, there is a cost, there's an upfront cost, there's, you know, a monitoring cost for it. Obviously, there may be logistical issues as well, especially with independent drivers, you know, how they get monitored.
That was my impression, I mean, Greg brought this up, and I looked into it myself, and I've seen it where it works in numerous over-the-road companies where they have their own fleet. Trying to tie an independent became more of a logistical, do we going to have a law that this county says, "If you drive a dump truck, you must have an active GPS." I'm not sure, because, you know, does he turn it on, or does he turn it off? It's a great thought, and maybe we can expand upon it, but I'm not sure it's the answer to things right now.
Let me give you a little additional information about GPS, because the process is changing weekly at a minimum, and probably daily. Five years ago, you had to have your own software associated with GPS. It's not the case now. And you can do an enormous number of things with GPS that's relatively inexpensive. You can get units for speed, routing, things like that, for 450 bucks, and put it in a truck, maybe up to 600 bucks, depending on the complexity that you associate with the A normal, good company now that sells the GPS leasing, which is the containment of the information that's provided by the GPS instrument on the truck, is such that you can tell how fast a truck is going at any time, you can tell where it is at any time, and anyone who has a password, which could be county personnel, or the owner of the mine, or the owner of the trucking system, can easily go into the internet and watch any truck at any time, and tell what they're doing. And while the sheriff's department couldn't utilize that information for enforcement or for giving a fine, there are many things in the permitting process that we put in that are stipulations for pulling a permit, or a cost associated with road damage, et cetera. So why would you not be able to take the information, the number of violations that occurred because of speed, and then have a cost per item? I think there are, a lot of the things that we're talking about in enforcement are associated with what the trucks are doing on the road. There are a lot of other issues, and certainly you would need to check whether they're overfilled, whether they're losing sand, or dirt, et cetera. And you have ways of doing that. But I think that not looking at GPS with a much greater vision is a mistake, because the other techniques are basically antiquated, things that we've been doing for 60 or 70, or 80 or 100 years. And this new technology provides certainly an advantage for the issues that I've heard as complaints, which is basically, these trucks are driving too fast, they're taking the wrong routes, da-da-da-da-da. You can't ask the mining people to cause that to occur correctly all the time, but you can very simply look on your own machine and find out what they're doing at any time. You can have reports on a daily basis, a weekly basis, a monthly basis, et cetera. You see that I feel relatively strongly about it, because I think it's an easy way, basically, of causing the compliance that's not occurring. And I can almost guarantee you, if Chuck has, and I don't, I know you don't want to do it, Chuck, but I can guarantee you, if they did do that, and Chuck sees that he's having a number of violations, you're not going to see that two weeks later, or a week later, it'll be stopped.
The dilemma I had was trying to, it's not so much the fleets, it's the independents, and I guess it would require, just the leap in my mind, was it would require a county rule. I don't think we ought not to look at it and be considering it, it was just, it would require county rule to say, "If you're going to haul, run a dump truck in Indian River County and haul dirt and fill, you're required to be hooked up to a working GPS system," and trying to get multi-independents into a system that works. And I haven't looked at that, that was my only question. If trucking XYZ has GPS, I think it works fine for a fleet. I just didn't know how to tie multi-users in, whether they come in from the outside or not, and I wouldn't write it off, I think it's a great technology, I just didn't see how to make it happen quickly and easily now.
I think you can do, I can, I think you can do it with the independents also, and there's a leasing process for this, for these costs. You don't have to buy the GPS instrument, you can lease it and lease the airtime, I know the county wouldn't want to do it, but they might want to, have something to do with the costs associated with the information that's going to be provided out of it. So I really think that it needs a long, hard look.
I don't know, these contract deputies, letting them shoot tires out, that works too, you know?
Greg, I understand that you had worked with the school board on something like this.
Just kidding, Greg.
Someone said, had mentioned that you could just, the truck operator could just turn the GPS off, could you explain that to me?
No, it's beyond the firewall, and they would not have the capacity to do that without hitting it with a hammer or something. Then you immediately see that, that that truck is...
If they're, if the truck is equipped that way, I mean, you can...
Right, if it's equipped with the GPS...
Built-in GPS, right.
You immediately know that something's happened to that instrument, and all you have to do is make a call, find out what happened to it. They're so complex now, and no one would want to pay for this, I'll tell you, but if you wanted to, you could have a flashing, the truck's speeding, going 45 mile an hour in a 30 mile zone, and that GPS identifies that, flashing light starts, the truck driver knows he's got 30 minutes to pull over to the side of the road because his engine is going to shut down.
Oh, wow.
It's that, how complex they get now. Oh, I thought that was Chuck leaving, instead of Joe.
Well, actually, in the insurance industry, parents can put these instruments in their teenager's cars, and know how fast the teenager is driving, or where the teenager is. So there's a lot that can actually be done via the GPS, and it is not very that expensive.
If you have a cell phone, most of the cell phones, you probably know where, within a few hundred yards, where somebody is, so...
Well, I think a lot, I think there's a number of people who are saying, "Oh, this is way too complicated, let's not go there," when in fact, it really is not complicated, it really is not.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a few questions?
Turn your mic on.
If, I'm hearing a lot of conversation about regulating speed here, and I don't think anything in our codes allows us to regulate violations of the speed limits, and I'd actually like to ask Officer Stewart about the standards necessary when you cite someone for speeding, don't you have to have, I mean, don't you, aren't you supposed to clock them, aren't you supposed to have this radar gun calibrated every three or six months? Aren't there certain standards before you can actually cite someone for speeding, using technology that have to exist?
Under Florida Rule 15B, all laser and radar devices are required to be recalibrated every six months. So we do utilize radar and laser in the sheriff's office.
And my problem is, we're hearing this idea of using GPS to now enforce speeding, and I'm not quite sure...
I don't think it was enforced, I think it was to indicate a problem or monitoring of a potential problem, and then use enforcement to correct the problem, just send them out, send them out into the area if they have problems.
Either use enforcement, or the permitting process that evolves on an annually or semi-annual basis.
Yes.
Withhold, you know, in other words, you have X number of complaints... Withhold, you know, in other words, you have X number of complaints, and that's enough to withhold the permit. It's not, it's not, there's no traffic violation citation involved.
Yeah, I think that what, you've got to have proven violations, I think, as a basis for, obviously, for any citations, or for any sanctions, or any fines, or any penalties. And I think the question is, is GPS monitoring data sufficient basis for concluding a violation did occur at a particular point in time in the past?
Yes.
And can you penalize somebody for that? I mean, that's what, I think that's the question you were asking.
That is.
Regardless of whether it's a moving violation, or we're going to pull a $5,000 bond and stop your work or whatever after so many monitoring data violations, essentially. And I think that's, isn't that what you were asking?
That's where I'm trying to go. And I can see for directional violation of haul routes, I can think of it very lively. I just, when I kept turning the reference to speed, you know, if they're speeding, we're going to, you know, there's going to be a violation of some code. Right now, we don't have regulations on speed. So I just, I think that's-
Well, we can put them in, can't we?
I don't, I don't, you know, the state says that you have to have certain standards, you know, calibrating these laser detectors, these radar detectors, to be able to enforce speed limits. I'm not quite sure we'll be able to pass an ordinance that says, we're going to have our own speeding mechanism for determining whether we're speeding, and it's going to be by GPS. And I think that starts running contrary to what the state statute permits, as far as enforcing speed limits.
Don't you use the term "safe operation"? In other words, they're responsible for safe operation of the vehicles that are involved there.
Right, and I'll have to yell to Officer Stewart on that, but I'm just not sure-
I mean, I think-
...I just don't know if you can use a GPS simply for enforcing speed limits. I think for purposes of determining haul route violations and directional violations, I think there's no problem doing that, I'm just hearing-
Well, what if you use enough for a citation, just for principle, you know, say, well, you know, your trucks have been going over the speed limit, we're not going to cite you for it, but we have records showing consistency that you've been going 10, 20 miles over the speed limit for a while. I mean, we can't give a violation, a citation, but give them, tell them it's in violation of all mining practices or something.
I think for sake of our discussions here, the one thing we can probably say is we ought to leave GPS on the table in the list for maybe into the future, but if we were writing a rule today, I don't think that we'd get GPS as a rule.
Yeah, but it's-
I think the technology is there.
I don't know why we couldn't.
Well, when you list, we go through that list in a bit, we can, you can list that as one of your potential rules. How's that?
Lastly, George, I just, I just want to say-
Is that the end?
The research will show you the accuracy.
Oh, I, there's no question about that. There's no question about, I have no problem or question with the accuracy, I just, I'm just not sure how, in my own mind, in talking to some of the people around the implementation, I'm having a little struggle with, and it's not that we can't get there, I just don't know how we're going to get there in a short timeframe, that's the main thing. So I'd like to kind of get the best and easiest or the best things we can in place, and then have it on the list. I mean, they can work toward it, that was my only thought, but, okay.
One more question. Has there been any violations on air quality coming out of these trucks? Some of these, I'm just coming here today, was behind one truck that just was speeding out stuff all over the place. Is there anything done about that, either by the sheriff's department or by the county?
To ask Sergeant Stewart?
There is a statute, a state statute, that can be written on for that reason, yes or there is, whether, I mean, we've written-
You better come to the mic, Jim.
How many actual citations the sheriff's office issued for that, I can't answer you at this time. There is a state statute that pertains to that violation, but I don't have those numbers with me at this time.
How do you enforce that? You don't have testing equipment, do you?
We have a testing equipment, but it's the emission, it's what comes out.
It's like a stuck injector where the black smoke is coming out.
It basically falls under what they call a fix-it ticket, under 316-610, it's an equipment violation.
It'd be interesting to know how many times you find these violations in the county.
I can look that up and get you that information.
Thanks.
Okay.
Again, on speeding, I mean, if the speed limit is 30 miles an hour and trucks doing 32, I mean-
Under state law, we can't even stop unless it's five over.
I mean-
So under state law, currently, we can't even stop them unless they're five over the posted speed limit. So if it's 30, you're talking 35.
35, so you're going to have some-
There is some leeway, it's on, you know, that goes toward the violator for, you know, odometer maybe being, or speedometer being out of whack or something like that.
Well, that's what, I mean, okay.
As far as the GPS system goes, right now, under current Florida law, we would not be able to write for a GPS.
Have you seen anything in discussion regarding that?
No, ma'am. There is a case that Mr. Golling and I were talking about it currently in California that's up before, that a traffic officer in California stopped a young boy from speeding. The young man's defense now is going to be that his parents did install one of those GPS systems in their vehicle, and at the date and time that the officer's saying that he clocked him going 15 over the speed limit, GPS is showing that he was well below the speed limit. So now that's going to become a little bit of a controversy in the California courts. It'll be interesting to see how that works out.
Yeah, well, thank you.
I never thought about that. Some way, did you? Okay, after GPS, if that's, if that's enough on GPS, then we can move ahead. Stan, you said you had a list of items, I mean, I think what I've heard you say is you're talking about this and using, increasing the permit fees for financing more enforcement on site, I mean, on the random checking during the wet and the dry periods. And what about the fees on, if you get called out, does the code enforcement, on an issue, what if you add to code enforcement?
Right, and I think as a policy, I think it makes sense that, I mean, we may get called out on a potential violation, concerning someone has, and find that there is no violation. I mean, that happens too. I think that in the case of fees for code enforcement inspections and so forth, that should be tied to our, you know, once or twice a year, you know, inspections. And if a violation is found, then the cost of a reinspection could be something that-
So the next time you get called on the same thing again, then you're going to have to pay-
Right, I don't think an initial investigation is, from a policy standpoint, that it makes sense to charge somebody for that. And we need to follow up on any complaint that we receive or anything that we see, but it doesn't mean that we find that there is a violation.
Then the other suggestion you had was the use of contract deputies in some form or fashion, either early on, reward if you're good, or later if you're bad, you add them in.
Right.
And bill, and using the fee to the mining operator for the use of them as for random checks.
Right, the ordinance for mining regulations could specify that the county could add, you know, at least, at least put in the ordinance that that is a condition that the county could impose and put some guidelines down there for that.
Feels it's necessary.
It could be something, again, I haven't proposed anything specific, but that's something you could either do upfront, say, for the first year, see how they're doing, or you could do it if, you know, if violations are discovered.
The other thing, though, was, and it was going back to taking the money, and that was having to do with pulling bonds. And first of all, you're increasing the bond by category. Right now, do we take one bond in, or we have a road bond, a compliance bond?
There are three bonds-
So you could pull one bond and leave the others in place?
That's right. In other words, there are three bonds. The road maintenance bond is really intended to ensure that, you know, if the county had to go out there and perform maintenance, that an operator wasn't performing that they should have or should, then, you know, the county could recoup the cost of maintaining it. The compliance bond is different, that really is set up kind of as a penalty bond, that if you don't comply with the site plan or the mining regulations, you can pull that. And then the restoration bond is really meant to guarantee restoring the site at the end of the-
Cost of restoration.
Into the phase or so forth.
So, I mean, I think that depending upon whether the value is right or wrong, we haven't had much discussion here about the road bond, except for the value, which is now $10,000 a mile.
Right, that's correct.
Or the restoration bond, which is $1,000 an acre. But it's acre, the acre part concerns me, because, I mean, if you consider the site, you got to, I don't know whether, I guess you're going out away from the digging, so that you include the stockpiles and the disturbed property.
Right.
The question about net acreage versus gross acreage, so, I mean, you're covering a big enough area, and you're satisfied with that.
I am, but the restoration bond and the compliance bond really can be used together, and that is that it's compliance with the site plan, and the site plan includes a reclamation plan. So they would be out of compliance if they walked away from the mine and didn't properly reclaim it, and that compliance bond would still be in place, which is the higher bond, as well as the restoration bond, so.
Let me ask you a question here. Stan, I don't know, I can't remember who said it, but it was one of the, somebody in one of these meetings said basically 82nd Avenue had been destroyed as a road, in effect, that the ruts and whatever had harmed it enough that the base and everything was basically destroyed. When something like that occurs, what is the difference between the cost, say, per mile, of restoring a road like that and the road bond?
Yeah, I mean, that would, that would vary on the particular conditions. I mean, I think, you know, at the outset, say, for a new application coming in, there are specifications on what kind of maintenance needs to be done for repairing a road and so forth like that. I mean, that's really kind of the kind of issue that we're going to defer to Public Works in terms of determining what is needed to get that road up to, you know, past-
Are you asking about whether $10,000 is enough to rebuild a road? I mean, we've moved from one to 10, and I mean, we started that question a while back about the cost being covered.
Basically, I don't understand that if the bond is enough to fix a road if it's actually destroyed. Up to a certain point, yes, it may be, but if the bond only allows you to fix a half a mile road, then I wouldn't think the bond was-
But did you mean 82nd Avenue or 69th Street?
82nd.
Yeah, okay, because it's 69th where we've gotten complaints that the road has really been impaired by the trucks.
I think the issue would be the same, but that's a paved road, and the bond is not covered in paved roads.
That's the point I wanted to make. The bond is just for unpaved roads.
I know.
Yeah.
That's what I'm, when I say 82nd, I mean the dirt from 60 to-
He just wonders, will 10,000 a mile really fix 82nd Avenue? And I don't, I guess Public Works, somebody have to tell us that.
I think, yeah, something like that, it's a lot more than that.
Well, I have no doubt, and I can't speak for Public Works, but I think what we did here last time as well, when Public Works was here, is obviously the county has obligations to maintain dirt roads for all the other traffic impacts that occur on it. So at some point in time, the county has to resurface roads anyway, based on whatever traffic happens, or unpaved roads may at some point have to rebuild it as well as, you know, grade it. So, I mean, those are issues that I think Public Works is going to look at on a road-by-road basis up there.
To get back into the compliance again, now, we've talked about this, the increasing enforcement and having someone, more eyes and ears through contract deputies, but if we get down to the bond and pulling the bonds, then I guess the, we first have to figure, or hopefully, the value of the bond is correct. But then we have to figure out how you're going to go about, or what is going to trigger something, I guess, as severe as pulling the bond.
Right.
And that's what you're suggesting, that create like a table of violations, I mean, something like if you have so many violations, and that would signify the bond is pulled, was that what you were-
Right, I think there are-
And how to come about that table, and that's why I was wondering, did you have a table or something that you wanted to talk about today?
Sure, I could, if you want, I'll just put this up on the document camera.
Yeah, that'd be a good, I think it'd probably be a good idea, because, I mean, I think what you're talking about is more eyes and ears and fees and trying to improve the situation. On the other hand, it's how you get to the ultimate switch, which is pulling the bond.
Right.
And what that requires us, would require of you.
Again, this flow chart that we drafted up is just to illustrate a concept, and that is progressive enforcement. And depending upon the type of violation, the number of times a violation has to occur, or a type of violation has to occur, could vary. And you could break it down into the more serious violations, which I think would be anything with illegal discharge, pollution prevention violations, road condition violations could be another type of violation, or truck driver violation, so the number could vary. But I think the process, and I'll just kind of walk you through this, just again, as a concept, that, you know, staff could observe a violation, issue a warning. If the applicant corrects the violation, then there's no penalty. But if there's a second violation, again, the number could vary depending upon the type. If there's a second violation, and again, depending on how serious it is, staff could schedule a hearing before a hearing officer, for instance, to get quick results. That could occur on a second violation, or if the applicant failed to correct the first violation, they just weren't responsive to that. The process could go on, that the hearing officer could hear the evidence and then determine that, yeah, there was a violation, and a bond could be pulled for the first time. The hearing officer could also find, hey, there is no violation, and then we're back to, you know, we don't count that strike against them, essentially. And all along the way, you know, if a hearing officer is used, and we haven't defined who that would be, if a hearing officer is used, that can speed up the process, you don't have to wait till a board hearing or so forth. But the hearing officer decision could be appealed by any affected party that would have standing, appeal it to the board, and obviously, any decisions ultimately can get appealed to court. And then the idea would be with the process, again, if there, for each kind of repeat of a violation, there is a hearing, evidence is heard on both sides, and a hearing officer makes a decision, you pull a bond a second time, again, it's the same kind of process. And it could be that, again, the number of times could vary, but at some point, say, after pulling a bond twice, and we've never had to get that far before, obviously, but if you had to go beyond that, and there still were violations, there could be a hearing officer could hear that kind of a final violation, make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to pull the bond and terminate the mining permit, and the Board of County Commissioners could do that. That would be an example of progressive, you know, consequences. You could change the number of times or occurrences that it happens, and just kind of make it progressive, what I'd call progressive consequences.
And this is not currently, the system is not currently under the way it works in our rules now.
No.
That's correct, and that's why staff was making the recommendation that we do define a process of progressive consequences in the ordinance. And, you know, right now, it really has been only twice in the last 20-some years because of egregious violations, either pollution, discharge, or, you know, repeated violation type of situation, and-
Would that include cash in lieu of pulling the bond?
Right, I mean, the issue of-
So we've had two issues where the bond could have been pulled, or-
Correct, that's right.
The ultimate has been, price has been paid.
Yeah, and it was, I mean, in both cases, it was over $10,000 both times, and that was quite a stick, you know, that worked in that circumstance. But some sort of process better defined than what we have now, is what staff is recommending, needs to be addressed in an ordinance rewrite. And to authorize who pulls, who makes the decision about pulling the bond. I think there are obvious legal protections and issues that we'd look to the attorney's office, and we've coordinated with them on this issue. I think, you know, having someone other than community development staff, for instance, you know, make that decision, have a hearing officer or the Board of County Commissioners, you know, make the decision to actually pull the bond is a good way to go. Using a hearing officer makes the process, makes sure that the process is pretty quick, though, if we were to use that.
The last item, then, would be, toward the end of your presentation, would be that if the bond is pulled, is how we address or what happens at that point, whether we would require like a written corrective action, or a timeframe, a period of time to give you a chance to review, to make sure the corrective action is in place, so that they don't come in and pay just cash and keep operating. They'd be something, there may in fact be a period of stoppage, which would have to occur so that they could, you could clear this, make sure the situation is cleared.
Right, there are, pulling the bond really involves a few actions. One is pulling the bond, the other is getting the bond replaced, another action would be correct the violation and come up with a plan for ensuring that the violation doesn't occur again. And that could, that could take, you know, several days for that, for that process. So you could have a pulling of security and a stopping of work at the mining site until, you know, a violation is corrected, could be one part of the enforcement action.
If I remember Chuck's, stopping is usually the ultimate of all ultimates.
It's a big stick.
At the wrong time, anyway.
It's a very big stick.
I have a question on that. Taking your flow chart another step further, you, the- Taking your flow chart another step further, the last thing that you said was that you could pull the mining permit. Now, if you pull the mining permit, how long is it pulled for? Is it just the mine is now dead? What is the mine owner's choice, and what's his alternative after you pull the permit?
Yeah, I think there are some options there, and, you know, again, we're kind of in that territory where we would need legal advice, you know, to lay this out. You know, we've not had to get to that point of laying it all out, but we probably should. Pulling the mining permit, does that mean, I mean, it could mean that you still have your site plan approval, but you've got to wait till the next annual, you know, permit, and you're out for months, you're out for a year? I mean, it would be, you know, it could be an extended timeframe. Conceivably, I mean, if you kept having repeated violations, you know, the very end of the process would be, you've got to restore the site, and, you know, the mining activity is over on that site. I mean, obviously, that would be, if you ever had to get that far, that would be-
The ultimate.
The end, the end result.
Yeah, George, let me, just maybe, he and I have had a conversation with George about the mining, the annual mining permit versus what you're talking about, and I was going to ask him later, so now seems like a good time to address this. How much leverage do we hold on issuance of the annual mining permit? I mean, if we come up and someone's had a few violations, are we really going to be able to say, no, they can't have their permit?
Well, right now, under the current regulations, you couldn't not do that. But I think Stan laid out the plan, I think he's exactly correct. I look at it sort of as a driver's license. You go out, you commit so many traffic violations, depending on the nature of the violation, a certain number of points, there comes a certain point where you're just, you lose your driver's license. Now, the question is, I guess you have a couple of options. One, do you just pull it until the next renewal comes up in September? So say you hit X number of violations by June, you know, do you lose your permit for three or four months, or do you want to have it as a permanent, sort of, you're dead on water, you know, you're just, you can't mine anymore, you reclaim the land?
Under the current, under current rules, we can't, but this is something, if modified, we could-
You could do that.
Put more teeth into the annual permit than we have.
You can, but I think you have to be careful. If you want to kill it for good, I think you really have to have a good system in place. It can't be something as simple as, we notice you violated your haul route once, you're gone. But I think you can set up a system that would survive scrutiny.
Yeah, that would probably go to court.
I'm sure a lot.
Taking their asset.
Right. But it's just like anything else, you know, if you're a restaurant, and you commit violation after violation after violation, sooner or later, they're just going to shut you down. And there's a lot of businesses that act in that way, and so I think it's, you know, I think it's permissible, but you're right, it could get challenged.
Okay. Well, Commissioners, you've heard their presentation before we open the public, we've got the questions, and just if you all have any questions or comments, we've heard about GPS. Anything, but more comments on GPS would be welcome next month. If you have any questions or thoughts on what he's talking about, now would be a good time to do it, and then I'll open up the public, and then maybe we'll see what we can come to.
George?
Yes, Greg.
Does this include, are we talking about the additional informations, surface water discharge?
No, no, this is just enforcement. We'll do that later, yeah, and it'll kind of tie back, but that's in another section.
Can we, you all could recommend some sort of a finite schedule? In other words, for violations, would be a six-month suspension, or a non-renewal for six months under certain circumstances, a year under other circumstances?
Yes, again, that would be progressive consequences. I mean, potentially, that's a possibility. You know, again, before you pull a bond and stop work, there, I mean, there need to be a lot of scrutiny and a hearing process, so that, you know, all sides could be heard and evidence could be considered.
I understand, you have to have some sort of a formalized hearing, I think.
Yes.
Greg, you asked me if you could tie in groundwater or other, if you have something that you think is an enforcement issue on any of those, then sure, I mean, we'll be glad to. I think that each of those categories are going to have some enforcement issues. I guess what I was alluding to here is, it looks like there's code enforcement issues, and then there's the ultimate bond issue as to how you stop the situation. Once you, if you kind of define how you're going to check and monitor, and then define what the ultimate is, I think eventually we can put groundwater, we put everything into some form and fashion in enforcement if we want it, so. But, you know, traffic has been the big issue on it right now.
Well, that's what today's is about.
One other thing, Stan, is there, I'm not quite sure how we identify these trucks. We brought up earlier that, you know, the big truckers are identified and all the rest of it, but these trucks need to have, we have to say they must be identified.
Yes.
They must have their name.
They have to have identification on the side of it, and I don't, I think our code enforcement officers' experience is, you know, they've been able to, you know, this particular trucker, you know, who they work for, which mine they're working out of. I don't think that's been an issue, for them to identify that.
But it could be, if we're going to charge, if we're going to start counting violations against mine-
Yeah.
For hearing officers, or, I mean, somehow we have to identify what mine they're operating out of.
Yes.
Otherwise, this whole flow chart might as well just go in the trash can.
Or recycling bin, yes.
Think green. I mean, this, we've been talking about traffic, but I mean, code enforcement applies to a lot of stuff, and Greg was alluding to that, I mean, we've got dust control.
Well, I think, I think to the assumption here, maybe that hadn't been spoken, is if you have a verifiable violation, which takes some work to do, I mean, it takes code enforcement or law enforcement, you're putting out extra work to do it. If you find one, I think the assumption is that there's probably been some others out there, and so, but I just want to get back to emphasize, I think it's very important to document, and if you can't tell who, which pit a driver's going to, then you really shouldn't be able to find somebody for it. I mean, you have to be able to document it, and I think that, you know, that burden falls on code enforcement, you know, to be able to verify that.
You know, I can see a mine operator, and if I was a mine operator, I would do this. I'd say, you guys get caught doing something, you don't ever tell them what mine you're coming out of. And that's where we go back to the GPS issue.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask Officer Stewart a question about this? If there's a ticket, if you're taking someone out there, can you copy and send a copy of that ticket to the county? Is that permissible, do you know? Are we allowed to receive a copy of any tickets?
Yes.
Maybe, you know, if you find a violation, it's a ticket, you can't identify the name of the, if there's not a name on the side of the truck that tells you where it's coming from, I mean, as we've heard, the license tags are going to take you back to an owner.
Could be an independent trucker, you have no idea what mine he came out of.
Well, if you can identify the owner, then you could probably at least go check the records of the two mines. In this case, we have two mines, to say, okay, on this date, at this time, this person from this operation picked up Phil. Where's your, you know-
Do you have a record, do you have a record of tags on trucks leaving, Chuck?
Each one gets its own.
Yeah, I mean, you can, he knows, a legitimate operator knows what truck has left his property.
It's the illegitimate operator I'm worried about.
Well, they know.
But they're still going to pick up from the mine, and they're still going to know who picked up dirt from you, right?
Does Hammond Mine have that?
Yeah.
They all have that? All the mines have that?
That's how they track trucks.
Basically, you're trying to control that, you have to get paid for the material, and we keep track of his body, of course.
Right. Follow the mine. Okay?
I've got one more question.
Yeah, all right, go ahead.
Stan or Bob? In checking the groundwater and the discharges, is it going to be implemented so that there's some type of monitoring to the abutting properties? I know we had a property owner asking a question about that, and wanting to see, have some kind of monitoring device between the discharge from the property that was being mined and an abutting property? Are we going to do that, and if we do, who bears the cost of the monitoring on the off-site?
With respect to groundwater monitoring, monitoring wells go between the operation, the mining operation itself, and adjacent properties. Generally goes along the perimeter of the mining project site itself. And that data will be monitored by St. John's Water Management District, possibly DEP, depending on the issues involved. And so that, they have their own monitoring requirements and reporting requirements. And what I think, you know, staff would do locally, if we got any complaints about, you know, something's happening with my well or what have you, we would forward that information and that complaint on to St. John's, you know, to investigate. We can look at copies of monitoring data that applicants are submitting to St. John's, you know, to see, but again, we don't have expertise, so we're going to rely on the other agencies to enforce that. If we see evidence that, you know, if vegetation impacts are occurring, you know, water tables being drawn down, that sort of thing, we would report that to the agencies that have the expertise with respect to groundwater. Now, you talked about discharge, surface water discharge, one of the, there are really kind of two ways of that getting enforced. One is the stormwater plan and the pollution prevention plan, which gets into discharge. That is locally investigated by Public Works staff. But one of the potential regulation changes is also to require baseline monitoring at that discharge point, you know, before mining starts, and then to have, you know, monitoring that happens every year to see what the, you know, is the discharge at that outfall point changing over time or not.
I think the other concern, Stan, is that you've got an adjacent property, you're the owner of the adjacent property, and you've got a concern about your own wetlands. And the concern is that the monitoring should be such that if the mining is affecting the wetlands on the other property, there's some type of monitoring done on the other property that identifies the loss of the water on that other property before it does damage to the wetland.
Uh-huh.
And I think that was, that's a big concern, and my question is, are we going to, or are we going to do something to monitor the off-site, on the off-site, so that there will be an indication if there's an effect from the mining before real damage is done?
And I think that's where we need to defer to St. John's or DEP. First of all, we don't have the expertise, and second of all, I think it's probably difficult to make a cause and effect determination, something like that. You know, if there's a drought condition and it's affecting the wetlands, as opposed to any effect on the wetlands coming from the mining operation. That's definitely an expertise that the state agencies have.
Is there a schedule the DEP uses to come out and view the mines, or do analysis of the vegetation?
I think they're going to get monitoring data from the wells is one thing they're going to be looking at.
Well, I understand that, but remember Dr. Baccus said that the first sign of stress is the vegetative? So is there any kind of a schedule that DEP does come out and say, okay, we're going to check the vegetative area around this mine, or do a spectral analysis, or something like that?
No, I think, again, that's where the county, you know, local staff being the eyes and ears to kind of help out the agencies, if county conducts an inspection and sees that there's vegetation impacts or something like that, they can report that to the agencies, and then the agencies can come out and investigate that. They could look at the data. But they're going to be, they have the expertise, they're the only ones that could, I think that could ascertain if there's a cause and effect situation going on there.
Of all, of every item we're going to, we're talking about, as we go down with surface water, groundwater, the nuisances and the traffic, et cetera, this is the one that I don't, you know, I've been worried about buffering and certain things myself with some of these sands, the mines. Groundwater, I don't know how, I honestly don't know how the county's going to deal with that. I mean, it's something we wrestle with in our groves a lot. We do have monitoring wells put in. But I mean, for instance, if you have a wetland that's on a piece of property and it's one lot over, one block, say 300 feet away, and you don't own the land in between, and you want a monitoring well halfway, and the landowner in between says, and I don't want a well, don't put it on. You can't force him to take the monitoring well. And you can control what's inside your property line, and you can ask a mine operator to have monitoring wells around it, but I don't know how you're going to do that, and I, we can, I think we're going to, it's something we just, it's got to, we've got to continually work with, and I think if the visual works, like if Sidney Box is right and visual works, then maybe visual will be one of the ways. But right now, this is not an area that, I know anybody in the county that's got much expertise.
Isn't that one of the things that Bob Adair was pointing out to us, is having a survey in the county?
Right.
And, you know, I think that should be-
Just coming.
I think that should be given a high priority. I mean, and the confidence you have in the St. John's, are the mines that are in the municipalities, are they under your control too? You have any involvement?
No.
So isn't there a mine up in Sebastian that hasn't had a permit for five years?
I've heard that.
You just heard it? You don't know?
I've heard that.
Now, you'd think if you would, you know, if it'd be next to the, I don't know if it's next to the county or not, I mean, in-
It's close to an incorporated county.
It is close. So we should really have some idea what's going on countywide too, right, in this regard?
Yes.
I mean, you're relying on the expertise of St. John's and these other groups. And five years have passed, or some time, anyway, where there was, the permits just lapsed, or disappeared, or weren't renewed, or something happened, right? I would think that should ring a lot of bells.
Right, but the municipalities have their own land use authority, and-
But they're going to be affecting the whole, I mean, we're talking about groundwater and everything, it should be, there's certainly-
But the only authority that usurps, and Bob may correct me this in a minute, but is a regional control. We, the county can't, I don't think there's county control on that.
Well, so we're relying on St. John's then?
Yes.
And, but they're not always monitoring on an annual basis then, obviously, if they're-
Well, I am confident that the county can have a process, and actually has a process now, coordinate well with them.
If there's a mine, if there's an active mine up there, and you're on St. John's list, I'd be surprised if they're not monitoring it. We've got monitoring wells at our packing house, and I am monitored every six months. I mean, they come out, we have reports, and, I mean, it's, I wouldn't want to say in this day and age religious, but it is religious.
George, on you, in that situation, I understand exactly what you're saying, but if you had, again, the off-site right next to the mining company, you can have an engineering company come in and put down a monitoring well on the off-site.
Correct.
The question is, who pays for that?
Well, I mean, what's happening, you know, as an example, what's happening, you know, with all the Everglades restoration, there are all these reservoirs going in in St. Lucie County, and or, in theory, a lot of landowners around where the reservoirs are going in now, we're putting in monitoring wells on our own to start baseline data, so in case there is a problem, we can tell it. We are paying for them individually. And that's, and if you, if you're, that's, I don't know how else you would do that. It doesn't help fix all purposes, but that's what the reality is, so. But we're going to open the public hearing in a minute, but I know this is near and dear to Bob Adair's heart, and I don't want to give him any more heart failure. Bob, come on up, tell me about the survey in the county, but we're going to keep, you'll get enough, just, I know while we're on it, before you lose your train of thought.
All right, thank you.
This is a workshop.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, George. My name is Robert Adair. I'm with the SWCD and Egg Advisory Committee. To answer your question, Mr. Smith, there's a, St. John's Dry Water Management District has two technicians for the entire district that does the water monitoring, and that includes for the monitoring wells and for the surface discharge. And the reason I know about that is at a recent SWCD meeting, Soil and Water Conservation District Board meeting, we invited Rich Burke-Lu to discuss one of the mines that was kind of in the county, and there were some problems with that particular mine to the south. And we asked them about their monitoring effort, and he said something to the effect that they were behind on that, and were having a hard time getting around the district. And in addition, some of the other concerns that you pointed out, which I think are right on target, if the county does do a semi-annual dry season, wet season monitoring, the wells are very easily measured to see how deep the water table is. So that type of data could be done by a relatively inexperienced technician, as simple as putting a tape measure down a pipe into the ground and measuring to the surface, you can use a light and water will stream them when you hit it. In addition to that, the SWCD has a program, and I know George is familiar with this, and most citrus growers are, where they'll install water table observation wells for a nominal fee, and I believe it's around $20 each. And the- And the local owners could have those installed, and then there's a, literally a stick with a float on it with measured increments where you can read that. And that's, that was, those were the issues that I really wanted to talk to, and I have some other issues that I may want to wait for for later.
Thank you. That's fine, that's good. What I was trying to do was, since this is enforcement, and understand this is kind of convoluted to some of y'all's thinking, we're trying to figure out what we're going to do if we find a problem. When we go into the regulations to put in monitoring wells as part of a, then we'll get there, but that was, we're back into it this time, I guess, so.
So the monitoring well issue is not really an issue then?
It's only an issue for enforcement side, when you don't, if it creates, if you don't do it, if you do not do the monitoring, or you don't, if you're not, like five years you hadn't had a monitoring. It's not a, it's really more of an issue of the permit itself and the day-to-day operation as to whether the permit would be granted.
And I think one thing that local staff can continue to do is to make sure that applicants are complying with the St. John's regulations. They're sending in their reports, we're seeing copies of it. If we, if we see any problems or anything, let St. John's know. Ask St. John's, you know, ask St. John's what the status is of their permit, and review the monitoring data and so forth. And I think that's, that's probably the best thing that we can do.
Okay.
Oh, I have a question then, either of Mr. Adair or somebody else here who knows what this is. Mr. Adair spoke about this monitoring wells with floats in that actually keep track of the water table. Now, does this keep track electronically? Does it send data somewhere? Who keeps track?
Donna, Donna, except for enforcement, can we-
That's what I'm, I'm asking, how do we find what's happening, and then have enforcement deal with it?
Fair enough. The $25 one is, you do all the work. You go out and read it with a clipboard and take measurements. But you can put data loggers on them, and those are much more expensive. St. John's can do this, they have test wells, that's, is whatever the cost of putting the data monitor on there, it's not that hard, a couple hundred dollars, something like that. But that can be done. I'm just telling you, from our experience at SWCD, they, St. John's is probably behind on that, they know it. Perhaps a letter from the county with our issues at hand could encourage them to increase that type of thing. I just want to let you know, the status quo right now is they're behind.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, thoughts on-
On traffic.
The staff's, huh?
On traffic.
Well, it's on, it's on anything enforcement. I mean, what he's saying is, is that they want to increase enforcement a couple of times a year by adding, raising the fees to pay for the people and/or-
The three recommendations, I totally agree with.
And then, and then we get into the permitting, and do we want to do this progressive system that would lead, the violations that lead to pulling the permit? It's really kind of the focus, but that's-
These inspections, I think, should, some of them should be surprise inspections, shall I say, not scheduled, the mines. Right, I think, we have the annual review, but then I think we should have one or two surprise or unannounced inspections of the mine. That's the only thing I would add to what your recommendations have.
You're saying you would add to-
Yeah, fine.
To require that the county make compliance inspections beyond just the wet season and twice a year, the-
Right, exactly. Not on a scheduled basis, so they would know what's going on.
Okay, I think, if we can, if the public, if y'all got some comments, I think we've kind of got through most everything to get ourselves at least to the point, and if you've been listening, where we think we're headed. But we'd love to hear your comments if we can, to see where we are.
Strictly regarding enforcement.
Open, it's on enforcement, this isn't on anything but enforcement right now. Once we do the enforcement, we'll get into discussions later on on everything, but go on, come on up, yes, sir, come on. And how this is going to be, if you agree or disagree with what the, what Kent staff is proposing.
Good afternoon, Todd Tardif, the Senior Stormwater Inspector and Enforcement Coordinator for Indian River County. So I just wanted to clear something up. I already do random inspections. These guys never know when I'm coming. I do water monitoring, I do the sampling. We, we have a pretty good enforcement program going. I know all these gentlemen by first name when I come up, they all know me. Usually my violations, when I violate a site for compliance issue, I deal with the state. I notify DEP, St. John's, Indian River Farms Water Control District, Sebastian Water Control District, whoever has a permit for that mine gets notified that that mine has been violated. I, yes, sir.
Well, we're talking about traffic mainly here right now.
I mean, it's a water mine. Talking about, he could get an entire mine.
Enforcement of what's there.
No, I'm talking about random traffic.
I do look at traffic situations. If I see heavy dust-
Oh, okay.
Something like that, I will notify the mine supervisor, that needs to be corrected immediately.
Was your name Ted?
Todd.
Todd.
Todd Tardif.
Todd, you, you look at the stockpile, you look at dust.
I look at everything from a gas tank, sitting there, to trash can, to the mine itself, the operation, all its permit compliance issues. Each permit from state entities and the county all have certain recommendations and issues that need to be addressed. I address all those issues. The state has pretty much, I deal with Derek Schmidt from St. John's, everybody, I know all the DEP officers, they come down, they pick me up, we go out and do group enforcement. I call them up, tell them what I find. They usually send us, send a officer down, and we'll do a joint enforcement on it. But I understand where Stan's coming from also. We need to have that enforcement for the counties also with the bonds and all of that. But there are other steps that we do take, and I don't want you people to get the wrong idea that, you know, we wait, by the time they hit code enforcement, these people are in major violations. Usually my violations consist of notifying the state, getting the object or situation corrected immediately, or I can apply a cease and desist order on the site to stop them for as long as it takes to correct the situation. Nine out of 10 times, these guys will correct the situation because they don't want to go that next step. And they know that next step means they're going to be dragged in front of the code board, and then their bond might be pulled, and on and on and on. The theory here is, depending on the violation, if it's a trash violation or a dust violation, it usually can be handled with a water truck or picked up. But when it comes to water quality control, the Clean Water Act, Florida statutes, these kind of violations, yes, we need to take a firm stand and make sure it doesn't happen. But like I said, we are doing things. We are out there, we are random inspecting these places. I am pulling the permits, reading the permits, making sure they're following all these different requirements by the state and by the county, and by the water control and water management districts. I don't think that, you know, we need to address more and more, maybe, you know, the random sample, the random monitoring, the random inspections, yes, maybe I can pick them up if you, you know, at the request. But like Stan said, this takes time. My average inspection takes three hours a site. We have eight mines in the county. So, you know, these, and then if there's violations, of course, desk work, computer work, time to correct it, then the follow-up inspections. And, you know, of course, I have all our industrial, commercial, and construction sites. So, you know, there is an aspect here.
I think the concern was, is like anything, Todd, is it, are we really getting around fast enough and quick enough? And I, you know, it's, you'd probably know that better than anybody.
We can use some help, or, you know, we should definitely use some funding for it. But we are doing, the county, Indian River County has stepped up to the plate. We are doing more than most counties, and I hear this from my contractors left and right, you guys are. But I do agree with Stan that more can be done, and what we need to do is these little things that build up, we need to nip it. We need to drag them in front of the code board and say, look, you've done this four times, that's it, you're done, you need to go see the code board. And yes, if it comes down to the not correcting the situation, I agree, pull the bomb.
Is there, is there anything in our rules that you, that you think we're missing that would give you some strength of, out there that would help you?
We'd like all the advice we can get.
Well, sir, I'll be honest with you. If it just came to the county permit, there are things missing, you know, there, but when you look at the fact that I'm enforcing all the permits, the state, EPA, DEP, the management districts, control districts, when you put all those permits together and enforce it, just-
You've got, you feel like you have the tools in your hand.
Well, I'd like, like I said, I'd like to see that next step and the funding take place, and the next step to be able to say, you know, I've, you've committed four, four or five small violations, which is fine, I work with them on it. Yeah, because these are businesses, these are taxpayers, we want to work with them. So I try to do that. But when it comes to the water quality issues, groundwater, surface water discharge issues, wetland impacts, conservation, preservation land impacts, I guess I think the county needs to have that extra step.
So you would be in, you're not, you are in favor of this progressive steps he's talking about, if you do this, and this, and this-
Right.
Something happens, and then a little further down, well, you've gone too far, your bond is going to come out.
Because what I'm trying to say, by the time Stan gets it, they've already been through small violations, they've already talked with me, they've already dealt with some state officials. So if it gets that far to where code enforcement walks, has to step in and say, you know, this is an issue, we're getting complaints, this is a constant complaining issue, then yes, I think we need to put the hammer down. But, you know, like I said, I don't want you to get the opinion that this is their option. Their option first is dealing with me and the county, and we do set, and like I said, I work with people. I know this is a business, and I work with them. Nine out of 10 times, we can work it out. But when, that 10th time, when the citizens start complaining, and when these things are not being corrected, yes, I think the county needs to have that extra step, we need to step in.
You don't do anything with the trucks, though?
So if I see an uncovered vehicle, I will let them know. I used to be a truck driver, I worked with DOT, I know the regulations.
But is that under your-
It's under mine laws as a citizen.
Oh, okay.
You know, as a citizen, I don't want a rock flying up in my wife's car, so I'm going to tell them it's not a covered load. And nine out of 10 times, I can grab Kramer, Cliff, you know, half these guys I know, and I'll tell them, look, you've got two trucks just left here with no uncovered load. And believe me, they'll get on the phone.
Yeah.
So-
Well, we're talking about trucks mainly.
Well, I mean, the trucks are, I think the truck enforcement goes back to the sheriff's department on the moving violations.
And if I, if I did see something like that, of course, it's my obligation to notify the sheriff that, you know, I think there's a problem out here. But, like I said, I would leave the door definitely for that extra compliance coordination between the county and its mines open, because the state, even though they threaten us, it's very hard to get them to come down and actually process a violation. They're very shorthanded, and, you know, I deal with the DEP and St. John's all the time, and they'll come down and they'll say, Todd, if the county can hear it, please do.
I'm sure.
You know, so, of course, that puts us in the obligation of trying to handle the situation. But I just wanted to bring that up, that a lot is being done here in the county.
Thank you for taking the afternoon off to come tell us that. Appreciate it. Suzanne?
Fran, you want to introduce yourself?
Fran Denhart, I live in Rancho Anubis Home Park. I'm at the lower end of 82nd Avenue going onto State Route 60, and Sue is at the upper end. I just have a couple questions. One I would like to know, and I don't know if you can answer this or not right now. If the mortuary is taken off in January, what will be the route for the trucks going from the mine?
Well, there's a current, the current route for the two mines that exist on 82nd Avenue today is out to the north and down 69th Street, and that would not change if the mortuary is lifted.
In other words, they won't be able to come down 82nd Avenue to State Route 60?
From those two mines, they are not allowed to come that way.
Were there going to be any other mines?
We don't know.
Well, they're still coming down 82nd Avenue, the trucks.
Sergeant?
Not a whole lot, not like it was originally, but they're still, from time to time, they're coming down whenever they think they can get by.
Get their numbers.
And, and if I'm fast enough, I will get out there and get their numbers, because I live on a corner house where I can see them coming down. But that was the one question. And then the next question I have to ask was, I was reading Chapter 971, about the regulations for specific land uses, and under the mining, it's a criteria for mining operations, and number four says, "All mining sites shall have direct access to a collector or arterial roadway, or to a local road that only serves non-residential uses." Bracket, "or properties designated for non-residential uses," in an area designated for non-residential uses. Well, I thought we were residential there.
Mr. Bowing?
Yeah, that criterion allows different types of roadways to be used for haul routes. Collector roadways or arterial roadways, and 82nd Avenue is a collector roadway. Ozlo Road is, State Route 60. There is an allowance in the existing code, in fact, we've identified this as an item to be clarified, it's been a point of contention in other mines, and especially around Felsmere, that you could also use a local road that does not serve residential uses. And we think that needs to be clarified or eliminated, basically. Nonetheless, in this case, 82nd Avenue is a, is a major road-
Even though it's dirt, it is still classified as a collector road because it's going to be a major thoroughfare.
It's, it goes a long way, collects a lot of traffic, and more traffic, the more development that occurs out there.
So are we going to be residential, or is this going to be clarified somehow or another so we can understand it?
I think it's going to be clarified that any road that's designated collector or an arterial road can be used as a haul route, and that 82nd Avenue would meet that criterion now.
Well, may I ask another question? You know, when you go up 82nd Avenue to 26th Street, is there some way that that can be paved and the trucks go down 74th instead of 82nd?
You're talking about 26th Street being paved? Is that-
That's the one that goes to St. John's Church, and right now it's a dirt road.
I think if another, if another mine or something is out there that has a designation that goes from south, or north to south, then something, then that would be looked at. But currently, there are no, the mines that are there are supposed to go north to 69th and out to 50, I mean, 66th, and they're not supposed to be going that way, so there's no reason to look at any other route at this time.
Okay, well, then the next question I have. I'd like to know, I heard you talk about you're supposed to call this person, that person, and the other person if you see these trucks or whatever's going on. Who is the best person to call, and what's their phone number?
You want, you want to call the sheriff, or you want them to call Public Works?
No, I think they should call code enforcement. Code enforcement can coordinate-
With the sheriff?
With the sheriff, with Public Works, you know, depending on the type of violation that it is.
If that's a haul route violation, and the sheriff's department will not address that?
That's what code enforcement should be the contact point, because they'll get, you know, if there's another department or agency involved-
Could someone get her the number?
Sure. Kelly, would you mind getting her the number? Thanks.
Okay, that's all I have to say.
The young lady backed by Peter O'Brien is going to hand you a phone number, I hope.
Okay, thank you.
Except, Stan, I presume you mean when they're speeding at its safety and welfare, then of course we call the sheriff directly. We don't wait for code enforcement, because public safety's paramount.
Sure, I would never advise you to not contact the sheriff's office.
Okay, thanks. My name is Suzanne Fransky, and I just wanted to follow up with Fran. This, on Chapter 971 of Regulations for Specific Land Uses, I mean, I'm reading this just as it's written, and it says, it doesn't say what you referenced, Stan, and that's what I'm a little bit concerned about. "All mining sites shall have direct access to a collector or arterial roadway, or to a local road that only serves non-residential uses."
Suzanne, we're going, that, that issue's going to come up-
Okay.
When we go back, back in time to summarize and go through each of the other workshops after enforcement, on other rules that we want to change, and that's one of the rule, that's one of the regulations, I think, that's been up to be reworded or- that's one of the regulations, I think, that's been up to be reworded or relooked at.
Okay.
Okay, so if you don't mind.
No, I'm fine with that, George, thank you, yeah.
You'll get your shot, I promise.
Okay, and then I just wanted to address this very nice deputy here as it relates to the calls they have logged. I'm sure you believe me when I say I have called the sheriff's office many times, and I have, and over the last two and a half to three years. And in particular, we were told to call Wesley Davis and those of you that were at that commission meeting. I remember Mr. O'Brien was sitting beside Wesley and Wesley acknowledged how many, many tons of calls he had had. And so it may be a matter of who we've all been calling, and also Joe Baird, I've called many times, but so have many residents out there. And it also may be how the calls are sorted into the agency. Because I've called many, many times and when I heard only nine calls, I thought, something's not right because there's many, many calls that have gone in. So it's probably a sorting issue. So that was number one.
We, we all acknowledge that there have been complaints on 82nd Avenue.
Right.
If that'll help, if that'll help you.
Thank you, just for the record.
Your sleep better tonight.
And then as it relates to the road, Stan, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I heard you just say your main issues concerns have been on 69th, uh, just a few minutes ago. And for, as it relates to the road condition.
That, right.
Yeah. And, you know, even at the last, yeah, that's, that's what I heard too. And at the last meeting, coming in here, I even shared when I got to the podium that I was stuck on 82nd. And in, in a bad situation because of the road condition, I called to Joe Baird's office and, uh, in the last two weeks and said, we've got to have some dirt and shale on our end of 82nd. And Joe got it out there within a few days.
We, we acknowledge that 82nd, that's...
Well, but what I'm concerned about, George, is that there seems to be a lack of communication from the different offices in the county as it relates to moving information forward. And I'm concerned about that, it's been an existing problem. And maybe the Planning and Zoning Commission can address how they would like staff to handle that in the future, working within their own divisions. Uh, and then as it relates to paving, I heard some comments on that, just the paved roads and not paved roads. Uh, as Fran has mentioned before, you know, that they're in, they're are paved. And that has never stopped, of course, the drift off the trucks, the vibration of all of their homes, as well as they even have to hang up their phone when they're on phone calls.
Suzanne, how are we going to enforce that? What enforcement issue would that relate to?
I think it's real simple, George, I really think it's real simple.
If the trucks don't go by there, then they don't have the problem. If they stay on their haul route, then you don't have the problem, right?
I know, George, but Ag 1, my, my theory is that Ag 1 is not compatible with residential for these myriad of issues that we've gone over repeatedly. So that's, that's where I'm going. I'd just like to be on the record with this. And trust me, I understand your frustration with us always coming up here, but it's not near the frustration that those of us have experienced. And following that remark, George, it won't just be our community out there that is suffering from this. If this continues in Ag 1, it won't be us here next time, it will be another entire neighborhood, and then another one, and another one. Because the tax base is residential in these Ag 1 areas now, and we know that.
It's just not, it's just not zoned residential, Suzanne.
Right, but it's, right, but it's, the, if when you accept tax bases, taxes on that and put residences in there, then that's face value. Um, and then as it relates to, um... Well, I think you just sped me up to that last point, George. Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Don't go anywhere, round two is coming up later.
Okay, well, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to leave today, but...
Round three, we're done, we're out of here.
Thank you all, thank you all very much, thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, anyone else? Peter.
Good afternoon, Peter O'Brien, Indian River County Commissioner. Uh, first, I'd like to thank you all again for the time and effort you're putting into serving the community here. Uh, speaking, I think for the whole commission, we greatly appreciate your all's efforts. Um, and enforcement, instead of using the, uh, the overtime deputies, kind of ask, have to do the, the cost analysis, and I would rather prefer that we would fund a full-time deputy who's FDOT trained, that would work a Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM shift, the same hours as the mine operations. And that full-time deputy would then spend his days.
Between the mines.
Going around randomly to different mines, he'll have the radar, we'll have him FDOT trained, and we would look at the cost of that, but I think we'd probably fund it maybe on a per acre charge to the applicants.
I mean, I think that that was, that's been the issue, it's like anything else right now, whether it's monitoring wells or any of this, who's going to pay what?
Right.
And I think if, if the commission wants to, prefers that, then I don't think anybody has a problem, but that's, I encourage you.
I would think, you know, if you run the numbers and look at how many truckloads, and again, Miami, they're assessing them, I think it's five cents a ton or something to pay for the environmental monitoring and stuff down there. Uh, you can do five cents a ton or a dollar a truckload, something like that, and that's not a big financial impact. But it would, it would put somebody full-time on enforcement, so what these residents just said, you know, we, we, we pulled one down and we threatened to pull another, and we got some really good compliance, but now there's a few trucks leaking out. And I think if we have somebody there full-time, um, then we don't have to worry about getting a code enforcement call.
In the sheriff's budget, is that any, that would not be an issue if we funded it, right? We could, we could assign a deputy, like we do Ranch and Grove, you could precisely assign someone to something like that?
Yeah.
Okay. Above your pay scale.
That's what I'd like to see us bring back is the numbers to do that, and that way we would have a full-time enforcement out there on the road, five days a week, dedicated to the traffic enforcement, and then also the, the top, the truck, because of the FDOT train, and that way we get it on one, one officer and we can do the enforcement that way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, I'm Lyndon Mitchell, I live at 8346 Fifth Street. And, um, I guess I just, I don't want to be redundant and I hear you about this only has to be about enforcement. I did send an email that I believe was shared with all of you regarding my concerns about the enforcement, and I spoke some about it last time.
Right.
But my question is, at this point, okay, as far as I know, there were four scheduled workshops.
Mm-hmm.
And this is number four.
Mm-hmm.
I only missed number one, but I would appreciate a clarification of where this goes from here. It feels like everything we're talking about is what to do after the damage is done. Um, at what point is it going to be decided what qualifies someone to be granted a permit in the first place? And is that part of the whole picture?
In, in the big picture, what we were trying to do, we've been asked to give the commission, the Board of County Commissioners, our findings from the public and our opinions as to what changes in our rules need to occur. Each of the workshops, we've been making notes about different issues. I, I keep talking about enforcement because we're trying to just deal with enforcement today, but when we get done with the enforcement, this, this particular enforcement workshop, between now and in September, we're going to pull, start pulling together our ideas. In fact, if we have time this afternoon, we were going to start talking about it today. We have a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting tomorrow night, we were going to talk some more about it if we don't have a big schedule. And, and if we have to, we'll have another general meeting, but the fact is, that's, we're starting that. And part of it was like what Suzanne was talking about, those rules, it'll be on the monitoring of water. All of the issues you're talking about, about the permitting, is, is permitting accurate or, or is needed, uh, I don't know, as good as we need to be to begin with? Okay, so that's what we'll be starting to talk about.
So, once the moratorium is lifted and the new policies and regulations are adopted, first created, which I understand is a lot of work, but once you reach that point, will there possibly be a change in terms of a mine that might have applied last year for a permit that applies after this is over, that will not be granted a permit because of concerns that have been raised throughout these workshops?
I don't know if I can, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's...
In the permitting...
If they can, if, if we get done, whatever the criteria is, if they, if they meet the criteria, they probably would be granted that. Now, Suzanne has asked that Ag 1 not be allowed mining.
Okay, so the criteria is possibly going to be changed in terms of policies and procedures, not just what we do after the mine exists? That's my, I guess my question is where...
Yes, ma'am, I think that, I think looking, having heard what we've heard, I, I believe there will be some criteria. I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I think that there will be some criteria changes, yes.
Okay. My last question is, um, what, once the policies are changed, will they affect existing mines?
Uh-huh. Mr. Glenn? This partially would be my answer, but...
The answer is probably yes, but there are some timing issues, when can you apply to new mines? Uh, the way the timelines work out is they'll, existing mines will receive their renewal in September. Uh, if we do pass new regulations, they'll probably take effect in December, January. You might be able to apply some of those regulations right away, you might have to wait till the following September when they come in for their renewal permit before you can implement other parts of the new regulations.
Eventually, the answer would be yes, I think, right?
Yeah, it's timing, I mean...
It's a timing issue.
Some might be implemented in January, some might not be implemented till next September.
Because they already have a certain agreement that...
Yes.
But they have an annual review. There's an annual review that each mine has to go through to have their annual permit reinstated. So we're hoping that, from what George just said, that we will probably be able to put the new criteria into effect before they can get their, their renewal permit. Okay. I said that was my last question, I just thought of one last one, I promise.
It's all right, feel free.
Um, it has been brought up at different public hearings about the proximity of mines to another mine and number of mines within a given geographic area. Is that something that is going to...
I think that will be discussed, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
And later on. Anybody else? Bob? Come on up.
As I've stated before, Robert Adair. A quick question, um, I guess, I guess for Stan, is on the, on your bonds that you have, you talked about the three different categories, the, for roads, compliance, and restoration. Um, are you recommending that you maintain the level of the restoration bond at $1,000 an acre?
I think we, we will revisit that with Public Works staff to update that. I think that the, the road bond was updated, they looked at that and updated that last year, but we do need to review that.
Okay, because I, I guess my comment, uh, just in what, I've done some research in restoration, that seems like a fairly low number.
Right, and, and, you know, there's, there's a couple of approaches. One is to set a flat rate and revisit that, the other is actually have an engineer's cost estimate, you know, like we do for other required improvements, but either way, we do need to revisit.
You mean, and make it variable based upon the time when it engineer estimates?
Right, I think it's going to vary by size and, and the amount of work done, obviously.
Right, and, and the purpose was to protect the county so that the, um, mining operation doesn't pull the plug and you're left with the restoration.
Right, that's correct.
Excuse me, Bob, while you're up, discussing this, what has your research shown?
Um, some of the, we're seeing that to do restoration of abandoned citrus land, it could be back to uplands.
Right.
Up to 5,000 an acre, and those attempts have been unsuccessful. Now, I'm not suggesting that number, I'm just saying, I'm assuming that you're talking about the perimeter, so you're more of a, at a lineal thing rather than a surface area thing. But I just want to make sure that the county protects itself so that there is adequate funding to do the restoration if necessary, which is becoming very expensive.
Thank you.
Would we be using the same landscaping codes that we normally put down for wetlands and things like that, ponds?
Yes, in, in terms of literal plants and the, the shoreline trees, yes, it'd be the same.
That's, that's the criteria we'd be using.
That's right.
And that's just got updated in the last year and a half, so...
Right, it's new. Okay, anybody else? The public hearing will now close. If anybody has a burning, a burning thought, please raise your hand, we'll open it back up, it is only a workshop. Um, commissioners, if you all, if I...
I'm fighting a break?
I've been asked for a five-minute break, we're out of here, five minutes.
I like the photo.
Yes.
Well, we gotta fill in after that. We gotta fill in everything. The one I have been able to do is round, I don't know how you're gonna do it.
Um...
Well, I mean, that's what they do. If we don't have anybody, the county wants to face us, and that's why we're there.
I also emailed George on nine thirty-four today, and they came up with some, well, oh, I, yeah, we got that wording.
Yeah.
Oh, was that you? How I took it?
I forgot. I started putting it, and I came back, and I went, where did yellow come from?
I at least did a black and white. Um, also, did you get a copy of Stan's email on the, trying to get into the annual renewal permit?
I mean, what we wanna do by then, we'll start up very few parts.
Well, it's only that, but we can listen to enforcement, too.
New phenomenon is a new car is reason behind much more accurate than it used to. But others are my old cars, and that was, that is accurate. Mine actually, I think, according to P O P, direct. That's right, that's, now, that depends on the size tires you put on the car. Yeah, that's right. Cause when I changed my rear-ended axle to my, my Ford F, and my tire was accurate with tires, I changed the gear in my transmission.
No, apparently, no, I've talked to, talked to, uh, Jerry, it's current.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's just, hey. Someone's gotta notify, I mean, someone's gotta tell them. I don't wanna snitch on them, but I mean, you know. Yeah. Yesterday, coming across the last, first year, and just fucking funny, no cover, terrifying all the back of it. But I was, I mean, you know, I was, I was scared, cause, well, it happened yesterday, one or two. I guess I didn't quite know what he trucked, and then, covered. They're scared to death. That's, if we're gonna do anything, right? More people do that, we have less, just, just, just trucks, right? So, we're gonna try to fix the future.
Isn't any mining on 82nd, once that's completed. You don't have it in that area anymore. It's a re-designated area farther out where there aren't those kinds of residential issues.
You mean like a land use change?
Yeah.
Let me just tell you, you'll get your opportunity at that when you get the land use evaluation or price report drafted. Hopefully we'll probably get to you next week. And these are some of the issues to look at. Do we need to change any of the land uses, things like that?
Okay, with that, I mean, I haven't heard any of, I guess, is there any objection to what Stan has proposed on enforcement then? I mean, he's kind of listed, listed out, some kind of a fee structure to add a little more help in the field. I mean, Todd was here, he sounds perfectly capable and well-trained in covering this, but maybe we need more people. Peter O'Brien suggested instead of the use, the off-duty officers, that maybe that we recommend to the county that they fund an officer to do this full-time. And I don't know the cost structure, but I guess, Stan, is that something that you all could compare? I mean, I, you know, in all candor, I think that's a better idea than the part-time myself, if that's, if it's necessary.
We can certainly research the costs.
Okay. I mean, I don't see any reason we can't recommend that if we want to. They're, they'll say yea or nay later. And then the, then he regret, this progressively, the progressive system on, on violations before you pull the bond, which is something that would have to be developed, but I think that as a recommendation to them to go ahead with, it sounds like a pretty good idea. So, is there...
Do we want to add a point system to it or something, seriousness or scale?
No, I think, I think that is, that type of concept is something to pursue, that certain types of violations carry more weight. They're more serious, they have more serious consequences, and so there'd be a shorter fuse on that. And other types of violations, you could have more occurrences of that. But at some point, even with the small stuff, if you have recurring violations, there needs to be, and we think guidelines that are specified, they get into that, to the system, you know, this is, this is when it's going to be, the bond's going to be pulled, you know, at a particular point.
The last item was, I think that you do need, and I agree with Bob, I think that on the, I think the bonding, the values or the pricings of the bonds probably needs to be looked at. I don't know if the compliance bonds are enough or not, but I think that you, the real, you need to get into real value now. Cost to, you know, the county on restorations, you know, whether it's, maybe it's $2,000 or $3,000 an acre, I don't know, or you have an engineering report, but I think you need to be careful about the values. And I like the idea, if it's acceptable with the staff attorney, Mr. Glenn and Will, that they have a, in essence, if you're, if you're in violation, you're going to pull the bond. I have no objection to the cash in lieu of bond, but I have an objection to an instant restart. I think that you need to have a period where you, you've got a problem and you all need a, like, they need to address to the staff what they're going to do in a formal way. This is in a written, like a written report to say, this is how a corrective action, this is what we're going to do. And then you all need to make, to review that, and then you need to have time to be sure. Someone goes to the field and makes sure that, that this is going to happen that way. And I don't know whether that'll take a day, a week, but I mean, I think there should be something broad enough within the county regs that says up to something, which puts a limit on what you can do, but I think there should be some timeframe, time put in there because if it's a discharge, maybe it's going to take longer to correct. I mean, it's just not going to happen overnight, but, and that that would allow you all to have a time period to review it.
I think that's extremely important.
Time and money.
And, yeah, some kind of a timeline.
If someone's going to use cash, this timeline has to be attached to it, attached to the...
I mean, if, if, the other thought, I mean, the other thing, and it makes it worse probably is that, which I have no desire to make it worse, but I just want to make it work, is that if they pull the bond and you have to reissue a bond, I mean, that takes time unto itself.
Right. And I think the key is the administrative effort to replace the bond, to certify that the bond is correct, the paperwork associated with that activity, having the mining applicant, I guess, in the situation, the mining company themselves, supply documentation for what the violation, what was the violation, how they plan on correcting the violation, allowing staff enough time to review that, confirm that the adequate procedures are in place to remedy the problem. And I think administratively, you know, you can have that timeframe.
I mean, I don't think any of us want anything punitive. I think what you want to do is get something that works, makes this, corrects the action and...
Administrative.
It may get their attention. I mean, but the fact is, is that's, we, and we work under the USDA guidelines on, on food regulations, and, you know, we face this all the time, so.
We can certainly put that in.
We comply, but every...
I have a question for the attorney. It, how, if we were to choose to try to set something in the future such that only so many mines could be operation in a certain geographic area, is that basically doable, legally?
It, I mean, it's been done before. I can't tell you offhand the steps you'd have to take to be able to do that. Like I said, I know in the Keys, they have regulations in place to limit the number of building permits that get issued each year. It's almost like, I think, a lottery system. But they have a, a strong justification for doing so due to the sensitive nature of the Florida Keys and the desire. So there's got to, you got to match up the, the legislative purpose and the nature of the regulation to make sure they're...
I think that's exactly the case, the purpose. What is your objective?
Before, can I, can I interrupt you? Before we head down that path for just a second, on, back to enforcement for a minute, we just went through about four steps. Am I missing anything that we need to direct the staff to follow up on? Under enforcement, before we go down?
Yeah, I think the GPS issue. You know, I strongly support that. And if we're going to do a cost effect...
I forgot the GPS.
If we're going to do a cost effectiveness on the deputies...
It's continued to...
I think we could get some cross figures. I'm not sure, you know, if one deputy is, might be less or more than, than having GPSs out there for everybody. And as was brought out, the...
Don't lose the idea of a GPS, Ryan, okay?
The importance of, to, to the owner of these trucks, it might be advantageous to him to know where these trucks are, especially the smaller ones. So, I think, you know, it might not, it's a good idea, I like it.
Maybe the wife of the driver would chip in, you know?
I'm worried my wife might get one of mine.
That's been a problem. Kind of sophomoric, but I, I think that, I think one of the major issues or important issues is that when we get finished, the staff and P&amp;Z Commission, and we've got new regs and, and what we're trying to do is say, how have the current compliance and enforcement regulations allowed us to get where we are right now?
Where we don't want that again.
Where we've got a situation we don't want anymore. Once we have this rewrite, I hope we ask ourselves the question, have we solved that problem? Are these new regs adequate to be able to cause these things not to occur in the future and allow mining to, and the people that do that to continue effectively and efficiently to do their business?
We have, if there are enough eyes and ears and the hammer on a bond, you may solve the problem, but you're right. We want to have gone from A to somewhere positive, okay?
Getting back to the question you were asking our attorney, is that I think it's important that we get this hydrology survey. One of the reasons why you might want to restrict certain mines in certain areas in the county would be, and I would think this is justifiable, is the amount of water that's present. And if, you know, if there's a shortage of areas where there's, where there might be a problem, you might not want a lot of water in there. I mean, if it's an important area, if it's an important area, hydrologically, then I would think that we could be more restrictive.
I think you're correct, but I mean, you have to, you have to have some serious studies to verify. I talked to the Lee County Assistant Attorney because they're going through the same process right now, and I think they conducted a study that they spent over $600,000 to do to, because they have a lot of mining in sensitive areas. And I know that's something they're considering is, if the mining operation has an off, has some type of negative effect on the water level and wildlife, and, you know, that's sort of a nuisance-type activity, and if you're allowed to eliminate nuisance-type activities, and Burt Harris can't stop you, Tapiens can't stop you, but you just can't sort of say, well, you just have to use scientific basis for...
You have to back up your information, document it.
That's why I think we, I'd like to see us push for this hydrological survey. We've been talking about it now for six months, I think, something like that.
What exactly does that survey provide, Dr. Baker?
I don't know. Let's let Bob Adair talk to it. He's...
Because I know St. John's River Water Management District has done a hydrology, believe it or not, CDC, Center for Chemical Diseases or whatever.
Come on, that's fine.
Got a hydrology report, a water table depth report from St. John's from 1988 to 1995.
The last hydrogeology report, they call it geo-hydrology, was done by the U.S. Geological Survey in conjunction with St. John's in 1988. We're about, well, 20 years have gone by, and then during that time, our population has increased by almost 50%. Our groundwater use has increased from 47 million gallons per day to 72 million gallons per day. And there was debate among the geologists for the miners versus Dr. Bacchus about the presence of cars, fissures, and other breaks in the Hawthorne layer, which basically keeps the Floridian aquifer intact. The Floridian aquifer is sacred to this county because that's where we get our potable water and where Ag gets their agricultural water largely. A lot of surface water, but, but a tremendous dependence on that Floridian water. If there are breaks, and, and those breaks are there, and mining activity were to then make those, those fissures open to the surface, that would obviously be very bad. And so by doing the study, not only do we see what the hydrological features are in the county in detail, and a lot of that information is archived right now by St. John's, but hasn't been analyzed. U.S. Geological Survey is equipped to do it. They've, they've done it for other counties, they did it for our county in the past, they just recently did it for, for Polk County, this is the report, and, and...
We can get it done. I mean, there wasn't any question. We could get it done. Here's the, and you wanted it, if I recall too, in my notes, there's also a seismic study. To be tied, to be all tied together, and I don't, in light of, the only thing that we have to consider for our recommendation is, is, and we, I would say we're going to have column A and column B. This is, column B is going to be for the commission because you're talking a million bucks. I mean, they're going to have to raise the money, not us. So, I mean, I don't think that, that you can, you can do what you're going to, I think you've got to make your recommendations. If you want a hydrologic stud, hydrologic study, a survey, you can recommend it, and that's fine.
Okay.
But it's not going to be, be out of our hands to do it, so...
Well, here's, to give you some real numbers to sink your teeth into, when Polk County did it, these are real numbers, their report was published this year, they spent, out of the county's, Polk County's funds, they spent $35,000 over a three-and-a-half-year period.
How did Lee County just spend $600?
Well, let me tell you, because, because they gave you the bottom line. The bottom line is $740,000 for Polk County. And the way they got it done is that they, they had two water management districts in their county, and they had each one kick in a big, big chunk of money. But what the USGS kicked in over that three, three-and-a-half-year period was $370,000. And Lewis Murray was here before the Ag Advisory Committee, he wrote me a letter, said, these are the numbers, we're willing to do it in your county, they, they had the money, I don't know that they still do, things have changed a little bit. His letter was dated in March of 2008. He sent me the cost sheet for, for the, the Polk County study. The Polk County, as I said, contributed roughly $35,000 over a three-and-a-half-year period, USGS $370,000. We only have St. John's. South Florida kicked in $275,000.
I think the, I question for us right now, it's not the money, it's the benefit. So, I mean, is this a benefit to move forward with or not?
Okay. Such a survey would provide resource managers, Eric Olson, our planning department, the miners themselves, environmental people with current and detailed hydrological conditions in our county. It's going to show us the changes that occurred over this time. Thirdly, establishes a benchmark. That was, I think, mentioned by Mr. Smith, is if we know what the levels are now, we have the old study in 88, then we can actually show if there's impacts that are deleterious to our water supply by our friends in the north, in Bivard County, with all the things that are going on here, they start punching holes and they start affecting our water table, we have a study that shows what it was in 2010, whenever they finished the study, likewise, likewise to our south. The other thing is, is that one of the criteria for the study that you could write into this with USGS is that you want it clearly understood, that you want them to look over a three-and-a-half year period, or however long it takes, water table effects on adjacent to and next to existing sand mines. We don't know what it's doing. And the reason we don't know is that they're coming out once or twice a year and looking at a water table level. That's not going to work. Needs to be done continuously with a, with a data monitor. They know how to do it. St. John's does it all the time, not necessarily next to mines, but they have monitoring wells in our county. They have monitoring wells all around the state. So it can be done, should be done, and I'm going to go to the county commission too and make that recommendation, and it would really empower that recommendation if P&amp;Z would endorse that. That's my plea.
Would that study not help the citrus industry too?
Hmm?
Would that not help your industry, citrus industry, agricultural industry?
Sure. It wouldn't hurt. I mean, it's, it's not going to hurt anything, but if you're not...
We are, we are consumptive, we have permits for that water. If those, if that water goes down because of something, then that's going to hurt the agricultural person. If they can establish what the water tables were and that they had an impact, Florida law, Florida water law, Rich Berkley, been here several times, you've been impacted. Somebody's going to have to ante up.
I don't know enough about it, but I'm, I'm thinking, as my own opinion, we have more trouble with intrusion, saltwater intrusion in the aquifer than we, where we get our water, than we do lack of water. And so I'm not sure that we're running in, I'm not sure how that would overlap, but I, well, I'm not opposed to this, it's only, I just think that, that they're good, you know, these are great ideas, but I'd like to get all the little details on the other stuff done too. And if you want to tack these onto the bottom, is that we think that this is a good idea, it will help, it'll give the county whatever, then it's fine with me, but it's really going to be a commission funding.
Right, but I'd like to make a recommendation, a motion, that we support Bob Adair's...
We're not doing motions, but you make it, and we'll, I mean, we're just doing consensus today, you know?
Yeah, I agree.
I don't think there's, is there anybody who just doesn't think that this would, that this would hurt and would not think that it would help the county if, if the county could fund it?
I think it's extremely important that the county fund this and that we do this. This is extremely important.
I agree. And don't say to support Bob Adair's idea. This is SWCD, my Ag Committee vote for...
He's toast, he's done.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just a messenger.
The last thing you want to do, son.
I'm just a messenger. I hardly would ask that you please write a letter to the county commission, let them know that you think that this is good. If it's in their budget, work out the details and caution with USGS and St. John's.
If you do this with the, with the three years around the wells, I mean, around the sand mines, you would have a very clear picture. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that, but, and the seismic profile would, would help. I'm, I put, the other engineers, what Dr. Brumwell said is that he doesn't, a lot of people don't think that that seismic is going to be much because the fissures should, what we see now shouldn't have changed.
Okay, but just, this, this...
So I don't have much...
There is a fissure, they did, they did get it with technology, it's, believe it or not, it's on the barrier island. Are there other ones in the county they didn't look there? So if they use that technology, which they had in 88...
If we're going to do one, we should do the other.
Absolutely.
And then we'd have an absolute for the county, okay?
And the seismic monitoring can tell us where not to dig, I understand.
Correct. You've got two issues before you. Are there areas where you shouldn't dig? Or maybe you should say, well, we know this is safe to dig. So you, however you, and there's a lot of debate on how you go about doing that. But I certainly think it's pretty easy to say, we don't want to dig here. You don't want to do it next to your, your, your water well field for your county, for example. That's just, that's just not, not a good idea.
So, the consensus is, is that the, the studies are probably a good idea and that they'll be tied into the recommendation, okay? Any other groundwater issues though, that, I mean, I've got, I think if you want to, we, I was going to go through the, this sheet that the 16 points he made, it was make it easy with surf wa, surface water, we skip over to groundwater since we've started it. Most of the groundwater issues are keeping up with the reports and talking to South, St. John's Water Management District, they require an engineering plan, professional hydrologists. I mean, that's, for the most part, that's what we were talking about requiring on any given mine, right, Stan?
That's correct. Are you on attachment four?
I'm going to, I went to your sheet here.
Yeah, right. The last attachment, we now have 36 items on it?
Thirty-six, I didn't count, yeah. I just, we started talking on groundwater, so I just...
Right, and you're correct. The two issues kind of that we just touched on, one, one was the countywide study, and then the other is in item seven at the bottom of page one, and that's the hydrology report, and that's the seismic profile for the immediate area around the mine.
Now, I will, Bob, let me ask you on the seismic profile, because I, this was a question I had with what their recommendation was. Stan, are you talking about a seismic profile around the area where we're going to put a mine in?
Yes.
But, I mean, you can't shoot a seismic prof, I mean, it would not, it would not make sense to do a seismic profile for a small area though, would it, Bob?
Well, we haven't, haven't defined what, what size area that is.
Okay, so the seismic, that ties into what we were just talking about.
But the testimony at that workshop is it can be done.
Okay, all right.
And, and just to, just to empower that, it was Lewis Murray's opinion that the seismology should be done over the whole, the whole county.
Right, right. That's why I was asking. I didn't think you could do it in small chunks. Sean, did you, Sean, did you just wake up out there? Have you been asleep? Come on up, come on up, come up, come up, come up. We hadn't gotten to the part where we say 300 feet from a conservation area yet, so...
Well, the, I just wanted to, in regard to compliance and monitoring and all that, the groundwater issues are separate in some ways from traffic issues and all the others.
Right.
Because, for one thing, they're much more complex and hard to identify, and so there's an element of time in regard to successful determination.
Mm-hmm.
And so I don't, I don't have your sheet in front of me, and I don't have anything to argue with about whether it's good or bad, but, but I do, I just want to ask you to consider, first of all, baseline documentation such as Bob is proposing, and secondly, specific to the specific place, the element of time, you know, what, how do things change?
The, one of the, on item seven, Sean, just so, because you don't have it, it's the first, under, it's the first item, line item, is historical and baseline data on the hydrology of the site and surrounding area.
Okay, good.
My question then is how long and how, I mean, how are we going to get to that? But that's, that's one of the recommendations.
That's going to be information coming from somebody smarter than all of us.
And, yes. The part of, the part of the dilemma has been in this county, and this is no ref, not meant at any one person, but we require engineering reports and require hydrology reports from engineers who use, we have to, some of us, or some people assume are technically competent, others don't like what they hear, so they're not technically competent. So we, we got to figure out who's going to give us this report.
I understand, yeah, well, anyway, I was on that committee that made that recommendation, so...
Right, we need the baseline data now.
Yeah.
Okay, Stan, you were going through this, in seven, we were talking about, you need, the first thing you need, the permit with the hydrologist.
That's correct.
Nobody would argue with that, I think.
Yeah, I think the first couple of pages actually come out of the, out of the, the initial workshop on surface water and groundwater. It includes requiring baseline data, because as you may recall, right now, St. John's requires monitoring wells, but that data doesn't come in until some period of time after excavation has already started. And we're saying that they need, they need baseline data here.
The dilemma, the dilemma was, is getting baseline dat, what, is what Sean says, is how long do you require it? And if we do monitoring wells on the edge of the property, you're not going as far out as what Greg is talking about. And I'm not sure how to get off the property, but...
Right, and what's in the, what's in number seven at the bottom of page one is, I think, as far as I could discern, a consensus was a minimum of one year of monitoring well data, at least a wet season and a dry season before excavation starts.
Okay.
And that allows time, actually, what you, what you, what you told, that those monitoring wells go in upfront, you can keep it if you want.
Oh, really?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thanks. You know, while they're going through the permitting process, they're already getting, getting that data, so, so that they go through the, you know, the permitting and approval process while they're, they're already, you know, getting data from those wells. So I think that, I mean, I think that issue is covered and...
I mean, I do too, but it's still all tied, it probably will all be tied into an engineer's document, wouldn't you?
Oh, no, no question, that the hydrolog, the hydrology report prepared by a professional hydrologist, the hydrologist...
It's got to come in, right.
Has asked inter, you know, what, here's the data, we've already got, here's what...
In this report, this is what we're looking for.
Here's what it means here, the recommendations and so forth, and...
Stan, does that, and I'm being redundant, but since Sean got up, I mean, that's an excellent example where he is, is, is what we're doing such that the cattle ranch would know from the monitoring process if the mine that's next to it is drawing down water, water on the cattle ranch and the cattle have no water?
Well, they would have access to the data. Actually, you can, you can go on, anyone can go online and look at St. John's CUP monitoring data now. They started that in the last couple of months. And, and they could look at data of monitoring wells on the adjacent property, and we could get them that information. I think the issue before about whether you, you have a mining operator put a monitoring well on somebody else's property...
Right.
I mean, I, and we talk, we're right back where we were a few months ago.
That's why I said, if, if, if you're worried about it, as a landowner, I think I would put a monitoring well out there myself to build your own data now.
Right, I, I think it makes sense that, that we, in St. John's will require, you know, where the, where the placement is and everything. I think you want it on the project site, it's closer to where the mining activity happens, and especially because it's under control of the operator. He, he or she can always get access to it, you know?
The big question is, is you on your hut, and I guess, Bob, this would be, the big question is that the monitoring data is for information to do calculations. You're trying to find the calculation of the cone. And I guess if you have it for the year, is, is the accuracy of that calculation, if it's correct, you won't see water drop in the, in the pines where the cows are. If it's not, then you have a problem. And I don't know, other than that engineer's guess or technically figuring, I don't know how you would do that. That's been my, the dilemma.
You want to know the quality of the water too. Like you say, saltwater intrusion, when the, the groundwater goes down, saltwater intrusion comes in.
That's what you, a professional hydrologist is going to do. Give his, your best shot on an evaluation.
Right.
When you call, if you ask Dr. Adair, as a consultant, he gives you his best opinion on all the data that he can gather, and this just adds more data, which hopefully makes things more accurate.
This gives you...
And it's currently not a rule. Is that right? This is not in our rules.
Well, right now, we do require, we require...
Not for the year.
Right, it's not, it's not spelled out at all with the specifying baseline data, that's why we've got this list here. Right now, we require documentation that it won't have an adverse impact on wells, but we don't specify that it has to be a report prepared by a geologist and what kind of data they have to have.
I mean, it may seem minor to some people, but this is a criteria change.
That's why we have it in here. That's why we have it proposed.
Well, one last, beat the horse to death. George, I think you're, you're correct. I think the landowner, in all probability and the interest of his, of his land and his business, would want to probably put the monitoring well in.
I mean, I would, but...
I understand. But on the other side of that, is if there wasn't a, a mine next door...
Why should it?
Why should I bear that cost?
I, I understand, I...
Well, Indian River County now owns that land, don't they?
Well, in Sean's land, no, they do not.
No.
No. Mr. Sexton still owns that land. They own, they own a, an easement, that, they own, the easement says he can't put too many houses on it. many houses on it. He can put all the cows he wants.
We're interjecting that you'd want a third-party monitoring as well.
That's kind of where I was going on that. Thank you.
We have to, you'd want a third party, yeah.
Right.
So.
Because anybody could view the statistics.
Moving on.
But the county actually could, I mean, the county health department could do something like this.
The county could go put a monitoring well anywhere they want to. I mean, they could go put in their own wells.
See, well, the county could decide to put a monitoring well in its own conservation area.
Right, might be a good idea on any given conservation area, you may want to consider that just for the future.
And I know the county has the expertise, the health department has the expertise to tell some of this stuff, so.
The health department's about half the size it was a year ago, too.
Just dropping through here, before we beat the horse too bad, is that we talk about establishing then the monitoring reports, including the frequency, et cetera, and soils requiring testings for contamination, the assessment in depth. Are all of these considered in an engineering report?
That's right, and you're on item 10.
Well, I was just looking down the list, is any of this not in engineering? This all looks like it has to come into the engineering plan, right?
Well, some of it's submitted requirements upfront, and then some are monitoring yearly requirements. You know, once you have baseline, then you're going to require with the annual report, give us new data, and then compare it against the baseline data.
Okay.
And that includes, you know, assessment of vegetation as well as monitoring well information.
Does anybody, I mean, as we move through here, is there any item in here that anyone?
I don't have the luxury of having that in front of me. So there's one thing that we talked about, and we talked about no discharge to be allowed, especially into lateral canals or rivers. But Dr. Back has said stormwater sheeting should be allowed, and I understand that the Fishers are actually doing this, have been able to do this on the 77th Street Mine. So is that something we have to add into the?
Yeah, that's a good, I think at the end of the discussion on, at that particular workshop, staff initially said, hey, one alternative is to say zero discharge, and that did come up. So we did not reflect zero discharge in this set of recommendations. If you look at items two and three on the first page, we talk about monitoring the quality. In other words, somebody could have zero discharge plan, or they could discharge if they meet the quality requirements.
Okay, so that one's covered. Another question I had was, it was indicated that there should be no rim ditches around wetlands, that it kills the wetlands. And this may have been another Dr. Back's statement.
No, you're correct, and that's on page two, at the bottom of page two and 15, we're prohibiting any excavation.
It was a distance.
For a proposed ditch from being located closer than 100 feet to an existing.
Okay, so that would that cover?
Right, we had the no ditching sort of.
Maybe we should all get another copy of these. Does anybody have these 36 points?
You can share mine.
Isn't it in your packet? The last couple of pages.
It's supposed to be, I think it's.
Not in this one.
It's the in the bottom of the back.
Oh, it is, forget it. I do have it. Sorry about that.
I just had my old.
We all have them.
Okay.
Stan, we'd like a copy of that flow chart, don't we?
Okay.
Vertical walls of clay that would reduce the linear drawdown, is that in here, too?
Yes.
Yes, it is, 15A.
Thank you.
Material barrier wall.
Okay, good. All right, you got all my points, then.
Consider requiring setbacks from all onsite native ventilation, that was under 92905 already.
Okay. Another question I have is regarding minimum flows and levels. I understand that that has not been established for Indian River County. Is that something we should be looking at requesting from St. John's?
I'm sorry, minimum flows of?
Minimum flows and levels have not been set for Indian River County. St. John's River Water Management District should do this now and establish minimum levels. This would establish our baselines for monitoring.
Hmm, is that regarding?
Bob, are you familiar with anything?
Wetland hydroperiod, maintaining a wetland hydroperiod, is that maybe what that?
For one year of monitoring program prior to excavation.
Minimum flows, I don't.
I think that would be part of the hydrology study.
Right.
Okay, so that would be included, all right.
That's if you want to do, the last study did groundwater, Poe County did groundwater and surface water.
And surface water.
If you add surface water, that would be what you're talking about. That would increase the cost of the study. But Poe County did do that for the $600,000.
Do you see a requirement for that, or need for that, or is it worth it?
I think it's more of a global thing for the county than an individual sand mine.
Right.
Okay. All right, my points are done.
The, let's see, back on the surface water discharge, who was going to do the quality, monitor, who's going to determine the water quality?
Well.
I mean, St. John's does this with our growth, now we have to match certain criteria. Is this, are we going to tie this to St. John's, or are we going to try and create county quality of water?
We will have them establish baseline water quality at outfall points, and then give us data on that yearly. But you're correct, St. John's is also going to be looking at that. I mean, really, in reality, there's going to be, the other item that's really going to play into that is the sort of thing that Todd Tardif does, and that's the pollution prevention control. He's going to be looking at discharges periodically. And that's the kind of thing that we want to and have the ability to catch.
When he drives by, he's got a dark, a black ditch with a tan flow, he knows something's wrong.
And he shuts it down. If there's a problem, he shuts it down.
Yeah, I've been there.
I have equipment to register and monitor that is state-approved. I just want to touch on Mrs. Pease's thing about the.
Thanks, Tom.
What we have on these discharges, we have two separate permits. The county's permit allows them to discharge storm water. The difference is, you cannot mix storm water with groundwater. Once you mix storm water with groundwater, it's no longer storm water, and it's not an illegal, is an illegal discharge. So the other permit is from St. John's, which is under the CUP, which allows them to discharge groundwater. This is a problem I am having with mines, that they're allowing their rainwater to mix with their sites. Once that happens, the rainwater is now contaminated and is no longer considered a legal discharge.
I was, I'm curious about something, because most mines are cleared off with dirt. When it rains, how can you tell the difference that it's not just the wash?
It has to be treated, filtered before release. Or you have to set up, which is a great thing that Fisher has done, and certain other mines are doing, that is recharge ditches. Keep your groundwater, separate it from where it's going to rain. Keep as much vegetation on the site as possible. Allow all your pumped groundwater to be recharged, filtered, and discharged through your consumptive use. But allow your rainwater discharge through your stormwater permit be separate. So there should be two discharges for these sand mines. One should be their stormwater discharge, and the other should be their groundwater discharge through their consumptive use. And what's happening now, they're mixing them. So really, the monitoring, you don't know what you're monitoring. You're monitoring rainwater, you're monitoring groundwater, you can't tell. So basically, they all have consumptive use, and they all have stormwater permits. So it gets confusing. Fisher has taken it a step beyond by separating the two, and it becomes a lot more feasible in understanding which is which and what you're monitoring.
Does that, Bob, does that limit the size of the mine? Because you can't, you have to have, make space for a stormwater as well as, so would that?
No, I think we see this in a lot of mines. I think people have the impression that these mines, when there is de-watering, that it's discharge off-site, but they use de-watering ditches, recharge ditches, or different cells that they put the water in. Almost all of the, almost all of the de-watering water stays on-site, almost all of it.
It's supposed to, anyway. But I mean, I don't remember, the reason I'm asking is, I don't remember on a few, having been in mines where I noticed what would be a stormwater pond, or stormwater.
The problem is engineering separation. They should have berms to separate the two, you know, small windrows around the site.
Right.
The problem is in the engineering design of the site itself. You know, if you establish a vegetative area here and you're working area here, you can separate them two with a small berm, a vegetative berm, and maintain your rainwater to recharge the aquifier, rather than to pump this water into a recharge and send it offsite.
But do we require stormwater management in site plans?
If you look at item number one, one of the things that we want to address is the pollution prevention plan, to have better information on that upfront. Exactly the kind of thing Todd is talking about as part of the site plan process.
You have options, but you've got your requirement.
We want to make sure that that pollution prevention plan is something that they submit, at least conceptually, and Todd gets to look at, upfront with the site plans, so that they're thinking through that whole process from the very upfront. Because like Todd said, there's a design, there are good design solutions to this.
We witnessed that at the mine we had the field trip on that time.
Right, Ranch Lake Road off 82nd. They have cells, they have their, all their discharge water going through different, a series of bermed-up cells.
Do we want to change the terminology from surface water discharge to storm water discharge, or add the word storm in there, parentheses or something?
I think as long as, and what Todd is really talking about, the NPDES requirements, pollution prevention plan, I think as long as we've got that in there, we're covered. Sorry to go backwards on you, Mr. Hamer.
No, I mean, it's one whole area.
It's already covered.
I was just thinking, in all candor, the 36 items you've got, when you pull them out, were very well thought out. I don't see anything that's not workable from the business side or the protection of the county. So I, it's just getting the rules placed in.
And I think from the first segment of the workshop this afternoon, you know, in addition to those last three on the very last page, obviously, we'll, and we actually continue to mention in 36 GPS monitoring, we can look more at some of the cost effectiveness of that. And you'd also suggested, like Commissioner O'Brien had about looking at the costs of funding an officer doing that, and also revisiting the restoration and compliance bond amounts. So we could add that to the list there.
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight, right? The, if we're in here, the one item that does come up quite a bit, and we keep hearing about, and I don't know how to, we don't have an answer to it, but we ought to at least continue to maybe look at, is this has to do with the number of mines in one area. That, you know, we keep walking away from it, but the reality is, is that because of private property rights, and that's something I believe in strongly. But I'm not sure that how to, other than, was it just traffic? Is that what we were letting dictate that?
Yes, and if you look at the bottom of page three, under the traffic and nuisance, we had, if you look at 25 especially, you know, establish paving thresholds, is there a paving threshold? And actually, in a lot of cases, an unpaved road might be a better haul route if it's properly maintained, is possible. It may be easier to, it may be easier to build up and maintain. Nonetheless, we have that in there, and the factoring in cumulative impacts for shared haul routes. And you're exactly right, what it gets back to, we haven't come up with a number or anything like that, but you know, there's a number of trucks, and if you look at 30 here, as well, you know, making sure that the number of trucks using a shared haul route, looking at cumulative impacts and all that, that we're not getting these, or won't get these, you know, backups of truck traffic, you know, intersections and so forth. So we're looking at the number of trucks and that sort of thing.
Is there, you know, the only, we talk about this with a dirt road maybe better than a paved road, but I mean, an 82nd Avenue is a collector road. I just, to me, I mean, I understand from having started with the Citrus Highway and 82nd years ago, is that it is going to be a collector road, and it's a very important route in the city, I mean, the county, but it's kind of a leap, I'm sure for everybody to make, that a dirt road is a collector road. I mean, so how much traffic can it support, really?
Well, while you're on that subject, too, George, in speaking to some other mine operators in other counties, they know going in that they're going to have to pave the road. I mean, it's not even a question to them. I mean, they just know that that's part of their cost of operation, is paving that road. Now, we talk about vibration problems. A paved road versus an uneven surface road, the vibration's 10 times as much. My guy report says that. We've got the dust issue, we've got the road condition issue. I really think we need to look at establishing a criteria that the roads be paved, and that there be an apron leading from mine to the paved road that is also paved.
It works, and you're looking at 82nd Avenue, wait a minute, you're looking at 82nd Avenue, and that works maybe for that road. Maybe it should be paved, and maybe there's a way to do it, but there's a cost involved there that maybe one miner or two miners can't bear. But you move, forget 82nd, and then go out into the middle of Ag. 2 or Ag. 3, and you can't do that. You're not going to do that.
Well, we could say in Ag. 1.
I-95, then, or Ag. 1.
Ag. 1.
Or east of I-95.
And then, it still could be a problem in Ag. 1 if you go south into county, you have some of the.
Right, and you actually, near 82nd, if I'm not mistaken, there's an area where the equestrian people are, I was told Donna last time, you actually get a lot of lump over into Ag. 2, right, against, very close to 82nd Avenue. So you're not just, everybody says Ag. 1, Ag. 1, well, out there, you're getting right up, right on to Ag. 2 and a part of it.
Can we make a recommendation, haul routes must be paved, but we can make special exceptions in certain areas of the county where there's no residential homes or something. But start off with everything has to be a paved road, and then make exceptions to it.
And any exceptions have a minimum base requirement.
As residential.
It's not like what's happened out on 82nd, where there's no road there practically.
Exactly.
And it's just destroyed.
That was what I would go for. I don't know.
That's okay, I just, the only thing, I don't, I think the paved road would be wonderful. I'm just thinking on a cost standpoint. It's easy for us to say that, but how are you going to get 82nd paved to the standard you want for a collector highway now? Not a, and I don't know how, I don't know how.
If I could just.
Eventually, anyway.
If I could summarize, two things.
I don't know how to do that. I mean, I'd like to see it. I mean, I'd like to see it paved, but I'm not sure how to go about that.
If you look at 23, I think we're looking at standards for roads that are unpaved, and then a paving threshold.
Right.
If it's going to remain unpaved, if it's below a certain threshold, it's going to remain unpaved. Adding base material is specifically one of the things in 23, because yeah, we've had situations where, you know, appears to be inadequate base material, or it may need to get base material added every year or over time. And the paving threshold did address some of the other issues we talked about, the dust from the roads, it takes care of that problem, it does help with vibration. So I mean, both of those are in there. You know, one is when unpaved roads are going to be, we still need more specific standards for how to upgrade and repair unpaved roads. When it's going to be paved, I mean, those thresholds apply. But you could also get in a situation with 82nd Avenue where the paving of the existing travelway may be quote temporary, in that that's not, may not be where the ultimate travelway is going to be in a number of years from now when 82nd Avenue is done, done as a roadway project. But it may be something that the paving lasts for 10 years, and it.
I don't know the distance from the Smith's Mine, Steve's, and then Tamman, from there to 69th. Maybe the cost of paving wasn't so crazy for that particular end. And maybe, I mean, I'm not against the paving, I really am not. I'm just trying in my own.
How to do it, implement it.
How to implement it, if you're going to try and do it, if you've got a.
I think the reality is that if we required paving in Ag. 1, we would eliminate mining in Ag. 1.
Not necessarily. When you look at Wild Turkey, I mean, how many phases was there? How many 10-year phases was involved in that? I mean, you know, you pave the road once, and you've got, what, 80 years' worth of mining in that area? Come on. What's wrong with paving the roads?
How much is paving a mile? I heard.
A million dollars.
Huh?
A million dollars.
That's what I thought, it goes to a million dollars a mile.
Right.
And you had 80 years of mining.
I don't know that we're going to have to pave, but I think the firm was for 10.
All right. But the, well, but the point is, that eventually that road's going to be a major road, so paving may not have to be that, may only want to design for the last 10 years instead of, like, a major road was designed the last 50 years or 100 years. A temporary paving situation or.
Right. And I just wanted to point out, and I know that it's very easy to really focus on the 82nd Avenue, but I appreciate the fact that there are many other situations. At this point, Fisher runs a smart operation. I don't think he's ever come in with a site that he has to go more than a mile. I think it's always been less than a mile on an unpaved road. And so he's only been maintaining a half mile, three-quarters of a mile, and that's smart, because that's, you know, less travel on an unpaved road. But there are situations where it's worked on an unpaved road, and so I think we need standards for both situations, because I think both situations will apply out there eventually.
You look in, Sebastian, is it 79th that Fisher runs that road? North-south?
Power line.
No, 79th.
Power line.
Yeah, power line. I mean, Fisher keeps that thing operating most of the time.
And you know what, if Dr. Fisher was operating all the mines in Indian River County, we wouldn't be sitting here going over this.
And the 82nd Avenue, I don't see even how, those trucks just couldn't get, go north, that was the problem. That's why they started going south. I mean, that road, there was not a road there.
Well, they improved it, though.
I know.
That's true.
By the time we got out there, there was. But there was no road there, absolutely.
Well, I mean, the key is base material.
Bring your attention to the fact that right now, there is a cost-effective, matter of fact, most asphalt plants have a surplus of this product right now. It's called millings.
Yeah, the millings, and you roll it.
And it can be rolled, it can be tampered, and after a couple of rains, it pretty much turns to asphalt. But it's.
For a while.
It's very cheap, and it's easy to fix, it's easy to repair. I mean, it's an option.
But you still need the base material, you've got to have the base underneath.
You have to have the base.
You've got to have the base.
I mean, you know, considering the cost of asphalt right now, the price of millings is a third of.
I mean, just in lieu of, and this may be the answer to this, and that is, in the staff's number 23, in the presentation to the commission, what they've got is an upgrade from where we are. And maybe on the, as an addendum to that, we should say, in any, within circumstances, if you want to say east of 95 or not, but. not, but where possible, we believe paving should be, occur, and leave it, and not make it absolute yet, till we know.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's always an exception.
If we go, if we change from administrat, the other, the first item on here, which we did kind of skip, it's in here somewhere, maybe it's at the end, but we changed from administrative use to special exception use. Do we have, if, in the special exception use, would we have the ability here to determine, or as a criteria to say, this needs to be paved, or this isn't, because I know on the Fisher Mine on eighty-fourth, is it eighty-fourth?
Yeah.
Where we asked him to pave the, he had to pave a hundred feet on either side of-
Eighty-sixth Avenue South was the extended Ozzy Road, and eighty-sixth Avenue South, to get the whole intersection paved, and aprons into the intersection.
Right, we did the apron, we made the apron a little bigger.
And he laid down base material, and-
And if he hadn't been out there, you ought to, because he did a nice job.
Yeah.
But is that, under special exception use, is that a criteria where we could make that leap or not, or do we have to be more precise than that?
You want to establish as many standards and as much specificity upfront.
Is, is there a way to, based on this thing, then, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing the concern, and I know out in Ag-two or Ag-three, it would be the number, numbers of trucks probably would drive this, if, if we exceed, is there a way to have a criteria where we accept twenty-three up to a point, but if you're going over a certain number, then the trucks have to be on a, on a, a number where we have to pay?
Right, when you said twenty-three, you were referring to the number, right?
Yeah, number twenty-three here.
The unpaid road.
Thank you.
My number twenty-three on the, in my happy book here.
He saw the question mark.
That's a, that's a good idea, yeah.
I mean, and I don't know the number, but maybe that's, maybe that's the trade-off, because we come up, ask you all in this process, which is still moving, but we've got a great list going.
We can recommend a threshold.
It's put in there, and it's above a certain, it was recommended above a yet-to-be-determined threshold that we go to pave, and I think that protects a small mine operator, but I think that even, the only other thing is, is if we're going to add, let's say we don't define extra mines, and we start adding mines onto a strip, I think you've got to make it known that some point-
The last guy aboard.
The last guy doesn't have to pay for it all, it goes back to the first guy, and everybody shares, and shares alike, as you build up the traffic.
When, when we get these recommendations, let's say that we do all thirty-six, and we want that taken forward to the commission. Obviously, the commission has to make a decision, and it's going to be based on, uh-
I feel Joe Baer is rolling over now.
Some of it could be cost, a lot of it may be cost. Is there any way that, and I'm asking Commission George, is there any way that we could prioritize what we think should occur in sequence based on cost? In other words, the commission says there's no possible way we can do these things, because thirty-four costs a million, twenty-three costs six-point-seven million, wherever those things, those costs are distributed to different groups, but I would, I would, because we've done so much work on it ourselves, I think it would be nice to be able to say, look, here is a sequence of things we think should occur, based on your, the commission's determination of cost, et cetera, and where the, where it's cut, or how many you do this year, or-
What, historically, what the commission's done, when we've set something up, if they didn't have, if they, if they didn't make their own decision, I mean, we, they send it back to us and say just that, would ask them to prioritize, or what they've done before.
What we plan to do here is, if you concur with these thirty-six, or add to it, or take some out, this is what we plan to bring to the board as the general idea of what we're going to go forward with, but then we would have to incorporate these into specific land development regulations that come back through you and go to the board again. So each of you get another bite at the apple here, and more, a lot more specificity. We're actually going to have to fill in the blanks.
Right.
That threshold that we talked about-
What is it?
Won't have to be nailed down, and we're going to have to-
And how do you, how do you deal with the last guy standing?
And that's another one we're going to have to deal with.
And hopefully, the board, the board could give feedback, you know, upfront, when, when that report happens next month to them, you know, the general, here's what, what we have, maybe we, maybe we'll get some feedback from the board.
We could do it now on reimbursement to the developer, don't we? Don't we do it now on reimbursement to the developer? If a developer goes in and makes an improvement, and somebody else comes in and puts additional traffic on that, that the developer gets somewhat reimbursed?
Yeah.
At a cost-sharing basis?
The, we have the petition paving type of, of formula, that developers, you know, sometimes they, they can get, you know, county funds back, well, partially for, for roadways if they pay, that, I mean, there have been developers' agreements that-
But that's within a certain number of years, isn't it? It's conditioned by a certain number of years.
Well, it would have to be something, some paving that the county would have funded anyway, or, and, and if the developer's doing it upfront, those are the kinds of issues. I don't think it's going to apply in this, in the kind of situations we're talking about here.
Well, it would have to be something like that, because the first person there would say, well, if this guy didn't come, the third person, I wouldn't have this problem, so.
Mostly, that's done with our utilities, putting in utilities lines, or oversizing it, not so much with roads.
Oh, yeah, drain, pipes, and dishes, and things like that.
But that's, that's not something we could make A or B on a special exception use, that's, I-
You shouldn't put off, you should make those decisions upfront.
Let's make this whole thing a special exception used to begin with, I don't think that's included on-
I think that's included, yeah.
Is it?
Yes, it's at the bottom of the list, it's at the end.
Thirty-two.
I knew I had seen it.
Oh, okay, yes.
It's, for me, it's the first item, because it cleans up, yeah.
It should be the first item, right.
Cleans up a lot of stuff.
Make that one the first item. Can you do that? You can move it around.
Sure, we, we just have them presented in the order of the workshops, that's, that's all.
The only, the only thing on this, just as a thought, and I want to be sure, and this is an enforcement issue back in, but is, I could see if, if, if in fact, the Wild Turkey Mine went in, and their traffic is going to go down at some point, and go out north, south on eighty-second, because that'll be the closest route to a paved road. The lady here today was, you know, was talking about it coming by their home and going to the traffic light there, and she was asking to reroute on twenty-sixth over to seventy-fourth, but I, you know, the only thing, from enforcement standpoint, at some point, I see, if that ever happened, I can see where the trucks are leaving Wild Turkey, and the trucks are leaving Smith or Hammond, and they're supposed to go north, and a driver looks down and sees a dump truck down there, goes, hey, Lee Roy, I'm going that way. And, you know, it's just, we get, that's the same on these numbers of mines, and trying to, because you have in here, something about splitting up and allowing a gap, routes of traffic, so that ensuring gaps in truck traffic, so you're saying logically, one goes north and one goes south on something like that now, so you don't all go one direction.
Right.
And I just, you know.
But just, just two things I wanted to mention about that, because I didn't want to jump in when, when the public was giving it, but I, I do want to say that there have been occasions when the, one of the existing sand mines up there has contacted staff, it's probably happened three or four times, where they've had deliveries of properties between State Road sixty and their mine, so they had to go south on eighty-second to deliver to the site that they're delivering to, and they, so there, we have authorized certain trips to go south, because the delivery site, that's the only way that, you know, that it was, it was right down, literally right down the road. So there, there have been some allowances for that. The other thing is, you know, however trips do split off as the network gets, that's going to happen, and I'll, and I'll just say the obvious, nobody's going to want the haul route going by them, I can hear the Indian River Estates folks, hey, thanks for sending a dump truck down twenty-sixth and, and all that.
We want to go in there right now.
But I'm just, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, I, I think that, yeah, as, as the roadway network gets built out, there'll be, there'll be more, the distribution will fan out a little more.
The church down there will have the, God will be against us.
You're just putting a problem on somebody else.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I can just see, when you start splitting it, trying to enforce it, just makes life a little more testing. Don't forget to add this continuing to research requiring GPS on trucks, is that worded correctly, or is that, that enough? Good. The only other area, only other thing I had a note to myself on, is that considering whatever happened, not, not just the Sexton property, but if in fact, we have conservation lands or easements, thinking we've got the ranch west of town, or wherever, and they're going to set in a mine, what, currently, what is the setback from the other property? A hundred feet? Is it a hundred feet? I'm trying to remember the rule.
Okay.
The setback on a mine would be a hundred feet from the property line?
Yeah, what, what we're proposing in fifteen is three hundred feet from a wetland located off-site.
Right, but I'm thinking about, and just, and, and one more addition to that, is in any conservation areas, maybe we go to three hundred feet from a conservation area.
What, what-
Is it the wetlands?
Right, so that would be different, or that would actually be-
That would be-
In addition to what we have, right now, we're identifying wetlands and upland, native uplands, and setbacks from those, not the boundary of a conservation tract.
The thought, the thought being, not because it's Sexton Ranch, or it's the ranch out west of town, but we, we buy, anytime the county's buying property, or there is conservation land, they probably got it for a reason, I'm thinking uplands, mixed, a mix of uplands and/or water retention, not just historic areas, but, and for that reason, if you just put in a, a standard three hundred feet from that property line, and it should be three hundred feet from a wetland anyway, but I mean, that, that would cover, it just gives you a little broader buffer, because it is a conservation area. And we've got set, we've got different conservation areas around the county now, I don't know of anywhere there's a mine other than Wild Turkey, but I mean, and I don't think that's abusive, I think that would probably be fair, but just put a buffer in, just to broaden the buffer for a conservation area.
That's an opinion.
Well, I certainly agree with that, but what about the, the county wells to the system? What do we, what are, what's the boundary around the county, the north and the south?
Right, we, we haven't set a, in the mining orders, we haven't said-
But those, those are going deep.
Those are all within the urban service area, there isn't any ag area close to it that could accommodate a mine.
Right, and they're not superficial aquifer wells.
Right.
There's not, what about the, the north?
I thought those were on the edge of the urban service area? And then, aren't the, aren't the wells around Hobart Road?
Yes.
In the Hobart, in sixty-six?
Yeah, and we, actually, actually, the Fisher Mine is pretty close, I mean, it's within a half mile of those, or three-quarters of a mile.
I was thinking the, those wells were half-ag and half.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that all our wells are going to be in that area, I mean, in the future, we may have wells in the South County, right?
This is the problem with Miami, I mean, they were, these mines were going in with their drinking water, and that's the reason the suit, the suit went through. So what, what do we have for, for our current, right now?
That, this could be tied to the, the study, I mean, it's just, we don't, we can't, we don't have, we don't have an answer now, but on this list, is that we probably shouldn't lose sight of the fact that, whether I'm right or wrong, whether I'm right or wrong, and I won't say three hundred feet for a conservation area, maybe we ought to just have a, a blank line that says, remember minimum distance from our drinking wells, and we don't have a distance yet, but at least it's down there, so we don't forget about it.
Well, we do have aquifer protection requirements in our, both our comp plan LDRs, which, which relate to the potable water wells, and have aquifer and well protection areas around them.
Do, I mean, okay, so I mean, I think, well, he's just, it's just a cautious, and I don't have, I don't think we have, we can't define it now, that's all. So I mean, if you had a forty-acre area for your well, and you put a sand mine, for some reasons, right next to those wells, is that going to affect them or not? I don't think we know, and, you know, so I don't know, we can't come up with a distance, but I mean, it's just in the list, if we're trying to make life better in the future, if it turn, if it determined affects something, then just at least keep it on the radar.
We will put it on the radar.
Put it on the radar.
Another concern of that, that I, I've read is-
Confirm bogey.
Vibrations, too, within a certain distance of, of our, our wells.
We ain't going there.
But I think that, that's one of the reasons that there should be a distance between the mine and our, our drinking, our wells, our, our county wells.
I just don't, I know the vibration is an issue, I just don't see how we can, I haven't think, I haven't heard anybody say how you're going to regulate that, that's-
Well, actually, there, there is, there's monitors that are very easy to use when it comes to monitoring vibrations, seriously.
The CIA does it all the time.
You're talking about the entire haul route.
Well, actually, no, really, just what we're talking about right now, proximity to our, our wells, the county's deepwater drinking wells.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add one addition to-
Mr. Chairman, sir.
Sir, if I can add one addition to your comment, that I, I think it was really on point, and this is, this is sort of my thinking in researching various mining activity throughout this state, once a mine is done, once its mining has ceased and the restoration has occurred, a lot of times, what happens next is development around the lakes, and whatever existed as a mine now turns into a new development, and I know some areas of the state consider this actually to be very harmful in the, in how you develop around these areas, because a lot of times, lakes are very deep, you have, I've heard with the Wild Turkey, that they're possibly considering allowing the Water Management District to, you know, run some canals through their water area to cleanse it. It seems, I would think would be, might be a good idea, is if you ever want to develop a piece of property that's had mining, that's had a mining permit, that you're required to go through an ag PD-type situation, so you have better, better control on how that land gets developed, so if you have land that's adjacent to a natural area, like a county-owned property, if you send it through the PD process, you can ensure that there's additional buffering, that maybe form corridors, wild, like corridors, and it just, as compared to the standard five-acre lots, so that's just something I may wanted this board to consider, is if you-
If we do an ag, and if we did ag PDs, don't we have, do we, what's the requirement of the county to provide water? Isn't there something that we, we said, if you choose ag PDs, we will in fact hook you up, if you, if we get out there, is that what?
Ag PDs qualify for getting potable water outside the urban service area, but they would have to pay for it.
Either they pay for it to bring it in, or if they, if we actually grow, then they could, they get, they have to pay for their share or something?
Right.
Is there any doubt, I mean, I don't see any problem with what he says, it limits, limits a little bit maybe the use of land, but is that, is there, do you see any, what is upside-downside of this, do you see, with PDs? I mean, you've been a big proponent of PD forever, till we started-
Yeah, I don't-
Till we started the minutial, minute-
Well, I think-
Whatever I want to say.
They were better when they had required-
Micro-messaging.
When they had required clustering, but, but I, I think the only challenge you've got is, is you're requiring someone to go through a discretionary process.
Well, that's why you would make it not discretionary, if you have a mining permit, if you've mined a property.
No, no, I mean, it's, the board has discretion as to what to approve, there, there, there's no by right development with a PD.
I think you could do it legally, I mean, if you abuse it, and they, if it's abused, then yes, you could bring perhaps a, as applied challenge to the way that they apply the PD, but I think it provides additional layer, I mean, it's just, I think you can do it legally, but-
We'll, we'll, we'll take it under advisement, we haven't gotten that far yet, but, yeah. Okay. Any, any other thoughts?
I have just one.
I haven't, I'm through my notes, so if I'm, yeah.
I just have one, on number nineteen, verify the existing twenty-acre phase requirement, I'd like to see that drop to ten acres at a time, less impact on everything.
I asked Chuck about that, he's not here, as to what, there was a reason, and it actually made sense, but I don't, I mean, it had to do with what he, I don't know if it was amount of dirt, he was, I mean, the, you know, just mass or not.
You wanted to reduce it to ten?
Yeah.
I think Chuck said it wouldn't work, there wasn't enough room.
There's, I think there's an economy, there's slopes, and there's, there's the slopes that you're dealing with, and, and also the, and that's part of the economy of the, of the size operation.
Well, ten acres is still pretty big.
I'm, I'm just, I, I know that the feedback we've gotten from the industry is, is that, given the slopes they have to work with, it's difficult to do just ten.
I mean, we put it up there, the industry's going to comment on this, so... I don't, I don't know, I, the...
I think with less than the impact...
The Presley Mine is fifteen acres, I think, and I mean, they managed, they didn't, they don't have to do twenty. I think it's kind of up to twenty, right?
At a time. Right, twenty, twenties, I mean, I know we've had some with eighteen, that are working with eighteen acres, but, uh, ten seemed to be too, too much of a cut, from what...
Well, we could say fifteen, since we don't, we're out here bidding. I, I don't know, I mean, I know that that was, you've said that before, but...
As the...
With less than the impact on everything, water, and noise, vibration, and restoration?
I'm not, I just, I, he, he, maybe we, we leave it there, and then we'll ask, you can ask Chuck. Told me that the other day.
That's the only one I would add, we'll change.
If you want to ask Scott. You'd have to come up to the podium, please, Scott.
I don't, I don't really think that you would lessen the impact on the noise and vibration, because you're still going to be mining in your, in your small area there. You don't mine the whole twenty acres at one time, you open up a small amount at a time, and, and mine that. So, the ten acres, what it would do is it would prohibit you from stockpiling, you know? I mean, that, that's, that was the problem, I think, that we ran into, but...
I think it was stockpiling. Less than the amount of the watering, which is a big problem.
I, I'm not an expert on water, so I'm not going to sit on that sound.
I would think...
I think that what, what he's, I think from a practical standpoint, what is, you start digging, and you reach ten acres, and then you just, you know, you're de-watering, and then you just keep going. I don't, you don't, it's not like you're trying to dig twenty acres at one time.
Well, that's my point. Uh, I'd like to see it at ten acres at a time. Otherwise, they could do twenty acres at a time and work their way, twenty acres, twenty acres, twenty acres. You know, ten acres, ten acres, ten acre. I mean, I'm sure it's economics, is the big point.
I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, but maybe you can, if you could check, check, check with Chuck, or with one of the guys, it'd be a good idea.
One of the things that I did hear you guys say, and then I would just, um, ask you one thing, I heard Donna say something about a clay, vertical clay wall...
Yeah.
On that list. Be mindful that, I don't know what type of clay you're talking about, but I'm not sure we would have access.
It can't be done on all, we had, they described it, it's only, it can only be done in certain situations, and it's...
It was where you're adjacent to a wetland, was one of the potential ways of keeping the hydro period of the wetland.
I didn't know exactly where we were going to get the material, if it was a certain type of clay, or that sort of thing, so I just wanted to be mindful that we may not be able to, to actually do something like that.
And I want to say something, Scott, I think I unfairly said that Wild Turkey could go eighty years, because I thought you had two hundred and thirty-eight acres, and twenty acres per mine, and you're going to go, maybe ten years each? So, I'm going to give you an opportunity to correct me.
Oh, I, I believe our permit only lasts ten years. I, I believe we have to renew after ten years, if I'm not, I don't...
Right, the, the life of the, of the, of the mine...
Of any given permit.
Is, is ten, is ten years, in fact, that was the schedule that they were...
For the whole piece of property.
For the whole piece of property.
That's for the whole two hundred and thirty-eight acres, or just for each phase?
No, the whole property.
Okay, great, thank you.
It's eight hundred acres, isn't it?
The, the, the mine itself is, is two hundred and, and change, I'm not sure exactly how many, but, but the, the whole piece of property is eight hundred.
Okay, so, after ten years, can you start mining on the other?
No, sir.
So, it's the whole eight hundred acres that we're talking about for ten years?
That's our, that's our county's limit, actually, we have a tighter limit than most counties.
Right, these guys can explain that?
Yeah, I, I just want to make it clear, I, I thought it was.
Stan, the only other thing that I, I just noticed here, is we've been talking a lot about BMP.
Thank you.
How are you going to fit, how are you going to fit this cri, criteria, this BMP list into the LDRs and/or enforcement? How are we going to tie that to the landowner and, and the mining operation?
I think what we'll do, and the way we've got it listed under one, is, is that we, one A, we've got the, the last little tick mark there is applicable items in the county's list of mining operation best management practices. So, I think what we'll have is a best management practices list that's not codified, it's not in the ordinance, but it's referred to in the ordinance. And we've, we've already gotten, and I passed out some of this information earlier, Chuck Kramer came up with some items, Todd Tardif came up with some items, there's state checklists on best management practices for, for a number of things. So, we've, we've got some resources, and I think what we'll do is maintain, you know, an, an updated list that's, that's referenced in the ordinance, but, but can be updated as better practices come forward.
Bob, don't, when, and the BMPs for citrus, don't we, we have to, we, we sign up, this, we're, we're going to follow that list. I don't, there's no real...
There's a script called presumed compliance.
Right, presumed, we term presumed, presumed compliance, okay. I mean, there's no real penalty, but we indicate that we're going to do it. I don't see why you couldn't, you know, maybe a presumed compliance along with that. You know, it'd give you a reference, like in their plan of action.
In other words, you could kind, basically have them sign up again every annual mining permit period? In other words, you could look at that.
A lot of these things would be under best practice.
Right, that's a huge, a big part of this, is just best practice, so... Okay. Any, any items, have we missed anything? Blasting, blasting is prevented, it's not permitted.
Yeah, we prevent, it's on, it's number seventeen.
No, uh...
No blasting and no use of active chemicals. There's some processes that use active chemical agents in extraction, too, and we don't want to, that's not needed in this county, and we, we don't, we don't want to allow.
Is there any other type of process we should be considering that, um, I'm not sure if we should say just no blasting, or, uh, anything that, I don't know. Hammering, or, you know, something's going to come up in, in ten years that's going to be not identified in here, because it's a new technique, a new technology.
No, I, I understand, and I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm sure there's, there's no way we can avoid workshops at some point in the future, again, but...
We wouldn't want you to miss the next one after, after, after my retirement.
All we know of in the research is the, is the blasting and the chemical agencies. I don't know of anything else that would be...
And I get fired after the new election.
We, we may learn something, you know, going forward, but I, I'm not aware of anything else at this point.
Okay, we got, you, uh, I think this, is there any, I think this is through consensus, I hope we can keep the minutes on this straight, but I, I think you've, we've covered just, I mean, as far as I can tell, most everything that needed out of our, kind of in summary form. I, I think if you all, but you, and when you get your write-up, you do the write-up for the commission on this, I think it would be a good idea, which I'm sure you will pass it back to us, I don't think we'll have any, if we have a meeting beforehand, you can, if you want one last sign-off, it's fine. If not, I think we ought to get a, see your summary, just in case we've missed something.
We can certainly do that, either at a, at a P and Z meeting before we go to the board in September, or we...
I mean, I know you keep saying, I know you're talking about September, but there's a lot happening, and I don't know...
Email would be great.
Yeah, I mean, just some, I think, I think it'd be, for everybody's sake, let us review it one more time, and if you think of anything, you're welcome to call the staff, they've been pretty open about talking about it. Stan knows more about San Nineteenth than he probably ever wanted to know.
Two things, while y'all were fresh, I wanted to bring up these two things. One is that, one of the items we'll probably want to recommend is a section in the code on existing mines, and have a specific section. That was one thing from the Lee County proposal, which I think was a good idea, to actually address in the LDRs, you know, mines that existed before, you know, two thousand and eight, here are the, here are the requirements that...
Oh, you got to, like, a code upgrade?
Just to address that whole issue, you know, which of these requirements apply, and I think we need a section on that. I think that was something that was instructed from Lee County.
We talked about it, I just didn't throw it in the...
Yeah, so I, I would like to add that to the list, and I just want to let you all know that the moratorium and all these workshops have focused on the, you know, what we call the, you know, the ongoing mining operations, the ten-year projects. The moratorium does not apply to incidental to construction, which allows for short timeframes and so forth. There are two issues that have come up with that, that, that we think we, we also want to look at some of the wording on that, not to change policy, but to look at some of the wording on how, how you, you know, measure the timeframes that are involved for hauling material offsite that's incidental to construction. Uh, there's also one other request that's come to us from someone who would like to be able to, it's not allowed now under the code as we interpret it, but would like to redig and make bigger, you know, ponds on ranchettes, and actually go from ranchette site to ranchette site, and dig more pond, dig it deeper, and haul that offsite. The staff is not enamored with this proposal, but it's...
You mean, go, you, we would allow, permit them to go backyard to backyard?
Well, we, we don't, don't allow it now as we interpret the code, but we think the code should address that, because it's an idea we'd never even imagined somebody would think about doing, but...
By cubic feet, or how?
What, what you want is a code to address either it's allowed, or it's not allowed.
Not allowed, right, that's correct.
Your recommendation would probably be not allowed, but I mean, the fact is, is we don't...
Can't re-mine, right.
Well, you can't, but actually, didn't, didn't the, didn't bent pine re, didn't they reapply and dig one of the lakes out there deeper?
That was an incidental to construction, and we put in additional timeframes for large projects over three hundred and fifty acres, but what we have with the, with the small ponds on ranchette types of properties is, we allow them to be dug, but we don't allow the material to be taken offsite.
Right.
So, we shouldn't allow someone more discretion for digging the pond deeper than we allow on the original construction of the pond. But as Stan said, it, it's something to put in the LDRs and make specific.
What if, what if somebody wanted to put a barn up, and he wants, needs more field dirt? We wouldn't let him dig the pond, dig anymore on the pond?
No, he can, he can dig the pond, as long as he keeps the fill on site, right.
He can, he can go dig deeper, as long as he keeps the fill on the site.
Right.
He can do all that, it's just when he, wanting to dig it deeper and then take the fill offsite, is that the issue?
Right, that's right.
Oh, okay.
You're just restricting its commercial use.
Right.
You're talking about muck and stuff like that? Or are you talking about some serious...
And that's a good point, that's a good point. It's, it's one thing with just taking the, the muck, the, the erosion that's come in, but what, what we've had is people wanting to dig it deeper. If it was dig, dug eight feet, they want to go to twelve feet.
And they don't have a place for the dirt.
Right, but again, all we're concerned, obviously, people need to maintain ponds, but hauling offsite is a different...
George was, was starting to think about conservation properties owned by the county, and, uh, one, one thing that might be, something along that line, I, I love the idea of a buffer, but, um, monitoring, uh, putting a monitoring well on, uh, conservation properties adjacent to mines that are owned, or that the county has an interest in.
I think that, I, you, when this goes to the county, that's probably not a bad, it's a good idea for the county, but this really, I mean, I, I think you can recommend that at the next level up, too. I think they probably should, I think they should do that. I would do it now, myself. Okay, yeah. Okay, any horses alive, or we got them all down and dead?
Did, uh, did you get a consensus on that last issue that you, you...
Which one?
The one about redigging. I mean, did you, you wanted a consensus on the P and Z?
Are you going to...
I just said that we wanted, there's, that's one section of the mining regulations that we, we want to address when this LDR amendment rewrite comes through, so you all will see that. We'll make a recommendation to you.
I don't think there's any, I didn't hear you...
And we don't need a consensus, you can offer one, but I just, it's, we haven't fully explained it to you all yet.
We're revising everything, too.
Well, yeah, exactly, we want to, as long as we're, we're amending nine thirty-four, you know, this, in the next couple of months, we want to also amend that section, we just haven't gone into it.
This, this process, remind me, I was, in North Florida, I went by one of the asylums up there, and I noticed there was all these people behind this wooden fence, and they were chanting,